The webinar will begin shortly. Please remain on the line. The webinar will begin shortly. Please remain on the line. The webinar will begin shortly. Please remain on the line. The webinar will begin shortly. Please remain on the line. The webinar will begin shortly. Please remain on the line. The webinar will begin shortly. Please remain on the line. The webinar will begin shortly. Please remain on the line. The webinar will begin shortly. Please remain on the line. The webinar will begin shortly. Please remain on the line. The webinar will begin shortly. Please remain on the line. The webinar will begin shortly. Please remain on the line. The broadcast is now starting. All attendees are in listen-only mode.
Good evening, everyone. Welcome to tonight's January 11, 2021 Westminster City Council meeting. I would ask all of you who are able to at this time to please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Ms. Parker, if you would, please take the role.
Certainly. Mayor Atchison.
Here.
Councillor Demott.
Present.
Mayor Pro Tem Sights. Councillor Seymour.
Here.
Councillor Scully.
Here.
Councillor Smith.
Here.
And Councillor Bowles.
Here.
I think the first item up for consideration is item 3A. This is minutes of the meeting of December 21st. I need a motion from council, please. Councillor Demott.
Thank you, Mayor. I move to approve the minutes of the December 21, 2020 meeting as presented.
Mayor Pro Tem Sights.
Second.
I have a motion in second. All those in favor, please signify verbally by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? There are none. The motion is carried. There are no presentations scheduled for tonight, but we do have a number of public comments. These were submitted. As you're aware, there are some received by email. Those were considered attached in your package. But I believe we do have at least three recordings and three people who will be given comments on public comment period live. Ms. Parker, let's start with the tape versions, please.
I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor. Did you say start with the voicemails first?
Yes, take the recorded ones first. I think that's the one you said you got in first.
Either way, we also have a couple of members of the public who are here to speak live, but we can go in any order you'd like. I would just like to warn those that are joining the meeting that there is some profanity in the first voicemail, so please be advised. Thank you.
All right, let's take the live ones first, if you don't mind.
Oh, no, absolutely. In that case, we have three individuals who signed up for public comment live. The first was Brittany Johnson. At this time, it appears that Ms. Johnson has not joined the meeting. We will give her a few moments and call on her again. The next person would be Jeremy Rodriguez. So, Mr. Rodriguez, if you would, please go ahead and unmute and give your comments.
Hi, Mayor and members of council. This is Jeremy Rodriguez with the Office of Congressman Ed Pearl Mutter. It's good to see you all again. It's been a while since I've been able to join you during this pandemic, but I'm with you tonight, and I'd like to give you guys a brief update with what has happened last week at the Capitol and some priorities for the 117th Congress. So, with that said, I'll jump right into it. Ed is very angry and sad about the attack on the US Capitol. He believes it's a result of the fervor that has been building for weeks, months, and years, and which has only been further incited by President Trump. Ed has also signed on to a letter asking for a geo-investigation into the preparedness and response of relevant law enforcement agencies on January 6. Ed believes January 6 was a point of inflection and reflection. He's proud the House and Senate reconvened only hours after the Capitol was invaded, so the certification of the Electoral College votes could be completed with peaceful transition of power could continue as been a hallmark of our nation. Ed has long supported removing President Trump from office and has called on Vice President Pence and the Cabinet to invoke the 25th Amendment. Trump is clearly unfit to carry out his duties and has failed to uphold his oath of office and has incited violence since before taking office. That said, Ed remains focused on January 20th, ensuring safe and secure inauguration and transition into the new Biden-Harris administration. It's time to get back to the business of the people and the country as we continue to confront the coronavirus pandemic, reboot our economy, and build a better future. Priorities for the 117th Congress, Democrats will continue to have majority in the US House, and Ed looks forward to addressing several big issues and getting things done for the American people. COVID relief facility for the state and local governments, schools, and frontline workers. Stimulus package to reboot the economy, which includes a comprehensive infrastructure package. Banking, climate change, Ed supports NREL and reintroduction of the Green Neighborhoods Act. Continued support and advocacy for the artist program to get our astronauts to the moon and to Mars and working on a NASA authorization bill. I'd also like to quickly mention that the Biden-Harris administration said they would introduce immigration legislation as soon as they take office. And so that is good news for constituents in the congressional and, of course, our nation as a whole. I'd also like to ask, you know, people to give our office a call with any questions or concerns of anything that I just mentioned or any issues they may have moving forward regarding the pandemic, policy issues, or anything federally related. We're happy to take those calls at 303-274-7944. We can also be reached by email. This is visit edwebpage@pearl.house.gov, and you will be, there's ways you can contact us through there. With that said, that's all I have for tonight. If you guys have any questions for me, I'd be happy to try to answer those for you.
Thank you, Jeremy.
Good. That's all I have. Thank you.
Ms. Parker, who have next?
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The next person who is going to be giving a public comment is Joe Armstrong. Mr. Armstrong, you have been unmuted from this side. If you please unmute yourself, you may begin your comment.
Thank you. My name is Joe Armstrong. I live at 7952 East 151st Place in Thornton. For 43 years, I lived in Westminster, and for many years, I was president of the Rocky Mountain Figure Skating Club at the Promenade Ice Center. During that period, on many occasions, I had the honor of speaking to council on figure skating and figure skating events. While I'm no longer with Rocky Mountain Figure Skating Club, I'm still active with US Figure Skating and currently a member of the National Membership Committee. 2021 marks the 100th anniversary of United States Figure Skating, and to start the year this week, we are holding our 2021 US Figure Skating Championships in Las Vegas. Tonight, I would like to recognize two people. The first is 24-year-old Mariah Bell. Mariah is one of the top-level skaters in the country and will be seeking her first national championship. Mariah spent her four remaining years training at the Promenade Ice Center. While she now trains in California, she retains her Westminster competitive roots and continues to represent the Rocky Mountain Figure Skating Club. The second person I would like to recognize is Cindy Sullivan, the Director of Figure Skating. Cindy has been the director of the program at the Promenade for over 30 years and was Mariah's coach when she was here. Under her leadership, the Ice Center at the Promenade has a nationally respected skating program and sent many skaters to complete the US Nationals in a variety of events. I ask you to join me in recognizing the figure skating program at the Ice Center and wishing Mariah success in this week's competition. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Armstrong. We refer to her best, and the competition, I'm sure, will be very strict and very competitive across the nation, so best of luck to all your candidates. Ms. Parker, you have another one for in-person?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. At this time, Brittany Johnson has not yet joined the meeting. I will ask Matt Williams to move on to the voicemail comments at this time, and should Ms. Johnson join the meeting, I will advise you.
All right. That's just a reminder that public, Ms. Parker did indicate that at least one of these may have some profanity in it, so you should be prepared. Go ahead, Ms. Parker.
Hello, councillor. This is Charles Najer at 15940 West 94th Place. After the event that happened in Washington, DC yesterday, I hope it is crystal clear to all of you the danger, the imminent danger that the domestic terrorist David Demott, who sits on this city council, poses to this city, to every resident, to every visitor. I have repeatedly warned this council. There have been multiple complaints about Councillor Demott displaying racist divisive symbols. Councillor Demott has posted pictures on his official social media accounts with Councillor Smith and Councillor Seymour displaying the Three Percenters logo. Well, guys, guess who stormed the United States Capitol yesterday? The Three Percenters. Councillor Demott always finds a way to distance himself from these divisive symbols and flags. He always has a really good explanation. Oh, he didn't understand. Oh, he doesn't support this. David Demott is a seditionist. Councillor Smith and Seymour support him and are supporters of domestic terrorism. David Demott not only does not have a place on the Westminster City Council, the Demott family is not welcome in the city of Westminster anymore. And I'm talking to you directly, David Demott, you fucking coward. So, let me make this very clear to you. From the person who has been perpetuating these lies on his social media accounts, from the person who still, until yesterday, was encouraging what happened in Washington, DC until things got violent. All of you councillors, including you Sights, you Scully, you Bowles, who pretend to stand up for justice and equality, and you Grandpa Herb, let me tell you something. You've known Demott was doing this the entire time. You've turned a blind eye to it. You've let it continue to happen. You, you know, and for this bastard, this fat bastard, to be allowed to sit on this dais for one more minute. You certainly didn't hesitate to condemn Bruce Baker back in 2017, when he made the comments about immigrants and rapists, but you just sit on your hands while a domestic terrorist, a fat, ugly domestic terrorist, sits on the city council of Westminster. I would encourage every citizen of the city of Westminster, if you see Demott, if you see Seymour, if you see Smith at the store, if you see Spike, pull him aside. Ask him why this jerk is still on the city council. Do not let his calm, relaxed demeanor fool you. The guy is a danger to the community. He needs to be reported. He needs to be thrown off the dais. And him and his entire family need to get the hell out of the city of Westminster permanently.
Bruce Baker, when did this council, by open vote, direct the city and our agents to defend the dishonest actions of the city clerk in court concerning the recall petitions for Mayor Atchison, Councillor Sights, Councillor Scully, and Councillor Bowles? When did council discuss that course of action? How could four council members participate in a decision that they clearly had a profound conflict of interest in deciding? In the matter of the recall of elected officials, the city clerk must act as a neutral judge. They must not favor either side. Their role is to serve all the citizens of Westminster. Our city clerk did not do that. She acted as a defender of the office holders being recalled. She has used her office to crush the recall. An examination of the clerk's actions show there was no uniform standard applied in judging the sections of the recall petitions. More importantly, there was bias in the clerk's choices. The recall minimums for every petition were met, so the clerk's mission became to find a way to reject enough signatures to prevent a determination of sufficient for any council member. And because the mayor needed the fewest number of valid signatures to recall him, the clerk rejected the highest number of sections on his recall petition. The clerk disguised her actions and her abuse of power by misreading the city charter, misapplying the Westminster Municipal Code and Colorado Revised Statutes, and ignoring the state constitution. When her first ridiculous reasons of rejecting sections for disassembly was answered by showing the circulator's affidavit was never separated from the signature gather, she switched to the specious claims of missing warning and non-approved form. The annotation for the LexisNexis version of Colorado Revised Statutes 31-4-502 says that the warning is needed on a page an elector might sign his or her name. Did she not read the annotation? Does the clerk honestly think that the mistakenly attached page of instructions to a section was ever meant to be part of the petition? Of course she doesn't. The clerk wants to deprive the signers of the recall petition their right to recall elected officers. The clerk is abusing powers granted to her. She is obstructing the process with delay by misreading and misapplying the law. She is bullying and intimidating the petition authors. She is using city resources to drive up the expense and legal costs to exhaust anyone who wishes to resist her dishonesty. The clerk has corrupted Westminster City government. The Westminster City Charter imposes a high standards for recall petitions. Recall petition circulators may not be paid. This means recall petitions are carried by volunteers, and correspondingly, more human errors will be expected from volunteer circulators. Our innate sense of fairness and by Colorado law allow human errors to be corrected on recall petitions. Removing a mistakenly attached page of instructions is completely appropriate. The clerk's true responsibility is to count valid elector signatures, guard against fraud, perjury, and deception, and allow for good-faith human errors to be corrected. The Westminster City Council members are trustees and stewards for the people of Westminster. One of your responsibilities is to safeguard the rights of the people, including the right to recall elected officers. Please fulfill the letter, intent, and spirit of our laws. Do not allow the city of Westminster or any of our agents to defend the clerk's dishonest and unconstitutional and unconstitutional actions in any court. Repudiate her actions and conduct of the clerk with an open public vote by this council. Council, this is your moment where you can show integrity. Allowing the recall to move ahead is not an act of condemnation to little people of Westminster. It is an act that shows respect for all people of Westminster, little or big, rich or not so rich, powerful or powerless. This is your moment when you can either serve all the people of Westminster, or you can abuse your power to protect yourselves. Please don't do that. Thank you.
Yes, my name is Robert Fils, and I was wondering, in light of the attacks on the Capitol, the attempted coup by our president, and seeing that law enforcement aided and abetted in the overthrow or the attempted coup, what guarantee do we have that this will not happen at the Westminster during a city council meeting? If someone tries to overthrow a city council meeting, do we have a guarantee that our Westminster police will not aid and abet that kind of corruption? That's my question. I'd like for the police chief to answer that. Thank you. Your grace, may it 303-456-2888. Thanks.
Mr. Mayor, that was the last voicemail that we received for public comment. At this time, Brittany Johnson has not joined the meeting, and so at this time, we don't have any further public comment for you. As you are aware, there were two email public comments that were received, and those comments were forwarded to council via email and posted online to the packet.
Okay. Thank you very much. Our next item is Report of City Officials. I'll turn to Mr. Tripp.
Mr. Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, members of City Council, thank you for the opportunity to make a couple of comments this evening. First of all, this public comment portion of our agenda is something, of course, that we take very seriously and we listen to intently. We have staff taking notes at these meetings where a person has asked a question that we think we can provide an answer to, we'll follow. that we think we can provide an answer to, will follow up and provide an answer to to those individuals. So we invite all to make comments about our city and what you'd like to and questions you might have. I will say, though, the city will not be responding to the public comment related to the recall. For people who are listening who may not be aware, this is a matter of ongoing litigation. Our city attorney's office is handling this claim as it does with all claims brought against the city on behalf of the city. The city clerk is required by the Westminster Municipal Code and the Colorado Revised Statutes to review and to evaluate recall petitions for compliance with the specific laws and requirements set forth in the Westminster Charter and our Municipal Code in Westminster and the Colorado Revised Statutes. The city clerk did as she was required to do under law. The city clerk's decisions have been consistent with the requirements of the law and have been thoroughly detailed and supported in the publicly issued certificates of insufficiency. Uh, but I will say this this issue will be litigated and it will be addressed and resolved through the court process. So thank you for the chance to provide some feedback on that one because there may be people listening who want to know a little bit more about the status of that situation. Um, I'd like to bring on with me this evening Deputy City Manager Barbara Opie. I I tried to use this portion of the agenda to outline, to provide a little information about some of the unbelievable extraordinary work that's going on by your city employees and acts of kindness and acts of civic pride that are happening in our community. And Barbara, if you wouldn't mind joining me and take a couple of minutes this evening to share a couple of those.
Thank you, City Manager Tripp. It's an honor to be here this evening. Thank you, City Council, for this opportunity to reflect a little bit about some of the great work that has been happening over the year and particularly what happened last year. So I'd like to highlight a few accomplishments by our staff. So I have a couple of slides that we'll go through. This first one, though, is a quote I want to share with you. General Services Department, the municipal court. A former client sent a message to one of our probation officers in November. And the expert that's listed here is part of it. Things are going so well that it's unbelievable why we were here where we were a year ago. Of all the things that led me to where I am today, I was thinking everything I learned along the way, I learned along the way, and you're the one that I can credit with guiding me. You've really made a huge impact on my life, so I want to reach out and tell you that I thank you. So great work in the in our municipal court. In the police department, next image, please, is a spread-only kindness campaign that they conducted back in April, led by the police and fire departments to encourage kindness during the time of great stress as the pandemic was just becoming just unrolling and coming out and we were just understanding what was happening. We are in our initial stay-at-home restrictions. This is a brief campaign that had over twenty-five hundred impressions and received great feedback from the community of trying to encourage people to be kind to one another and understand that we were all under great stress. In the fire department, as schools were moving to virtual sessions, the Fire Department Public Information Specialist implemented a virtual program to continue third grade fire prevention programs during this time. The program was titled Fire Safety Bingo in Westminster Fire Department's Virtual Firehouse. Prizes, bingo cards, and a flat sparky were distributed to each school to support the interactive virtual program. Students could take a picture of flat sparky participating in some type of fire safety, fire safe activity and email it to staff and win a pizza prize party for their family. Each student that participated received a free ice cream courtesy of fifty-two eighty burger bar, and the program was very well received by students, teachers, and parents. It's great created was great creativity by the department during some uncertain times. In Public Works and Utilities, next slide is an image of appreciation from one of the residents who received assistance last year. The card is from a hardship program recipient. That's a good reflection of the impact that our water bill assistance programs has had on our customers. Portion of the card reads, you gave us a precious time gift of time to help us catch up on our finances. Saying thank you just doesn't seem like enough. I'm so grateful and blessed to have you come into our life. This next slide is just a series of quotes that we've received over the year from our community. Thank you messages from folks who participated in our water bill assistance programs through the year. In our hardship program, we helped nine families for a total of over $4,000, typically with families that had serious medical issues that happened for their families. Uh, we also had two COVID assistance programs that were developed and executed last year. Up to December, we had helped about 500 families with a hundred dollar credit to their accounts. Many participants were could not express their gratitude enough for the difference that that helped made in their life. And then we now automatically are adding all lead recipients into our bill credit program and ensures that they are able to receive a extra tax, extra help, excuse me, on their bills sooner, ensuring that all eligible customers receive it, reducing the paperwork and staff time. We already have over 300 recipients by early December. In Parks, Recreation, and Library, a rapid testing program at the MAC and Front Range Community College, where we provided staff support to this innovative initiative and help facilitate the testing program. Rapid tests were available Tuesdays at Front Range Community College and Thursdays at the MAC. And cars would start lining up hours beforehand. Sorry, we're a slide ahead. But the the main thing on this one is just to note that at Front Range Community College, which was a shorter term period of time that we did the testing, we reached seven hundred and sixty-three tests and identified ninety-one individuals at that site to help prevent the spread of the disease. At the MAC, we reached three thousand three hundred and fifty-four individuals, finding five hundred and forty-two testing positive. So again, trying to help mitigate the spread in our community. Other partnerships that we were able to do during the year was the Public Health Order Ambassador Partnership with Tri-County Health in Adams County. You've heard about this program as well. That program launched November sixteenth, and we're now currently have seventeen Public Health Order ambassadors. They regularly walk throughout Westminster neighborhoods and businesses to distribute public health packet information. They have since we've launched that program, we've reached nearly ten thousand packets have been distributed during the five hundred three hundred and fifty-three hours that the ambassadors have worked. These costs will be reimbursed directly from Adams County Care's Fund, so we thank them for their help. Uh, the next image, please, is the MAC supporting our growing home food pantry. And you've heard quite a bit about this. The MAC has been serving as a storage and sorting center for growing home, and several staff have been helping with this operation from April through December, including the receiving, storing, and sorting of food into boxes for distribution. In December, the MAC was turned over growing home for them to utilize as their distribution center through April. Moving that distribution center to the MAC will help support the food pantry in a number of ways, including streamlining the transportation of food, storage, and ensure that our volunteers and staff have the best indoor and socially distanced environment. The Growing Home Food Pantry distributed food to over four thousand households in 2020. Last but not least, the libraries, next image. Libraries continue to serve our community, circulating over eighty thousand items using our curbside pickup program, posted over one hundred programming videos to Facebook, and added hoopla to our collection. They also implemented a computer use by appointment program, still trying to provide that opportunity to our community. This is just a small sampling of some of the great work that staff accomplished during the last year. Like to thank City Council for your support and thank staff who continue to be creative and support this community and each other during these unprecedented times. It's a great honor for me to to work with such caring compassionate people who are continuing to be creative and find ways that we can continue to support our community. We really do appreciate the support of City Council on these efforts in serving our community and look forward to the opportunities the new year presents. With that, I'll turn it back to Barbara, to you, City Manager Tripp. Thank you.
Thank you, Barbara. Just just two things. First, Barbara made these comments tonight because these departments report to her. She's one of three deputy city managers and and they've done some very innovative and creative things within her area throughout throughout the entire city. But what she mentioned this evening, you know, not only provided a lot of service that was really necessary during difficult times, but we were able to trans to move those employees who had been doing other work into those jobs to help serve our community and kept all of them employed. You know, that's really important to our economy, and we're really proud to be able to do that. And of course, the employees are very appreciative of that because even though they're part-time employees, some of them really rely on that as their their sustenance, and they have several part-time jobs they may do. So Barbara, thank you for your work. I'm proud to work with these folks. There are difficult times in front of us. I do think we need to consider that there are some really good things going on in your city. And as Barbara said, we thank you for your support, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem and Council. That's all I have this evening.
All right, thank you, Mr. Tripp. First council member up on their reports is Councilor Scully.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So first of all, I just wanted to report that Counselor Smith and I were able to attend the Rocky Mountain Metropolitan Airport meeting this morning. And I know that during her time, she will probably want to update you as well. But I'll just give you a quick update. They gave us a briefing on the the what has happened in the past, what what are some of the concerns? And a little bit of just a touch of what has been done and what can possibly be done in the future. And then they set the logistics of how the meetings will run from here on out. And we'll be getting our first meeting, determining our first meeting for February here soon. They're going to send out a Google Calendar trying to update us and see if we can find a time that would work for everyone. They've even talked about a possible evening meeting, so we'll see if that comes to be. It was great. It was a great privilege to serve with our fellow electeds from around our community, including commissioners and counselors from other cities. Commissioner-elect Tracy Kraft Tharp was on the line, and Commissioner Leslie Dell Camper was also on the line. So it was a great privilege to serve with them and and to have their representation as well. And then I have several thank yous that I would like to express tonight. And the first one is to Barbara Opie. What a great presentation, way to set the mood for tonight. Really appreciate that. If if you can be anything in life, be kind is truly the message, and I thank you for that. When there is darkness, the only thing that can put out the darkness is light, and kindness definitely does that. So thank you, Barbara. I want to thank Juliette Abdel and the Westminster Chamber of Commerce. I have come to really love your hour or I'm sorry, your half-hour meetings every day at eleven o'clock. I really look forward to them, and the mayor is usually on a Monday, and it's a great way to get caught up with our city and what's going on. And I would like to especially thank our inclusivity board. Our inclusivity board has done great work over the last. They always do great work, but they've done some great work in the last week working on a proposal of how we would name parks, buildings, and things in our community. I was very excited. This is kind of a little passion of mine, and we had brought it to the Parks and Rec Board. Jason Gang has just done incredible work on this. And he's he really is making sure that he is collaborative, and he brings everyone into the fold to have input. And the inclusivity board certainly rose to the occasion. I appreciate that. And then on Saturday, they also had a meeting to talk about how can we be more action-oriented in our community? And it was a very robust and good conversation, and I truly appreciated that as well. Those are the that's the kind of work that really fills me up and makes me want to do more service. So thank you so much. And then I would like to take a moment to reflect upon what happened in our nation last week. The attack on our nation in the past week has left so many of us reeling with shock, emotional distraught, and, to be perfectly honest, terrified. During this time of fragility and uncertainty, we, as the leaders of our community, need to issue a statement to ease the minds of our residents. I would like to propose, as I have been approached by many constituents, that we, as a city council, issue a statement against the horrific acts of violence and destruction against our Capitol, elected representatives, the essence of our constitutional process, and the heart and soul of our democracy, as well as support for our new leadership and the dedication and loyalty to our Constitution, nation, and laws. It is important we, as the leaders of the community, take a stand. We need to join together to demonstrate the values and expectations of our community. We need to take a stand against the actions of these individuals who attacked our nation and specifically condemn racism, bigotry, prejudice, and white supremacy. We have taken these steps in the past, and thus we have set a precedence for such actions. So tonight, I call upon my colleagues to join me in making a public statement to our community. And we, as a united council, issue a public statement. And I would like to propose that we add to our agenda a time to have this discussion about the public statement we would like to issue to our community, if we could do that, Mr. Mayor.
All right, Ms. Scully, thank you. We'll bring that up tonight. Counselor Demont.
Excuse me. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Counselor Scully, for your report. You kind of stole a little bit of my thunder, and I'm glad that you were able to join the inclusivity board. That is one of my liaison assignments, and they did great work in conjunction with the Parks and Rec Board as far as the naming of the the parks and coming up with the policy. And I really have to give a lot of credit to staff. This was something that was brought up to me a couple of years ago when I first had the idea of even renaming a park since I've been on council. And it was clear that we needed a a good policy set in place so that if you do rename a park, there's good reason. And, you know, even honoring the historic names of parks, if it makes sense. So I recall City Manager Tripp bringing that up to me a couple of years ago, and I'm glad to see that staff took that forward. The Parks and Rec Board have done great work, as well as the inclusivity board has really stepped up, as Counselor Scully said, and done a lot of great work. This is our first meeting in 2021. Twenty twenty was a hard year, and I hope that we all can hit 2021 unified and that it's, you know, quite frankly, a much better year and that, you know, it has nothing but good things ahead of us. So thank you all for joining us tonight, and here's a good 2021.
Counselor Seymour.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Want to report on the board that I am a liaison to, Special Permits and Licensing Board. Had a meeting already this year. Great news, continuous for the city of Westminster. Another business has reached out to start a business here in Westminster. And I won't let too many cats out of the bag, but if you if you like food from Louisiana and Cajun food, you you'll be happy about this one, from what I hear. So look forward to that. It's great that people want to invest in Westminster, especially coming out of a out of a pandemic. And also encourage that, well, our restaurants are now open at twenty-five percent capacity. That actually puts an extra pressure on them. And I I continue to ask you to support our local our local restaurants. If you're doing takeout and you feel more comfortable with that, please order direct from the restaurants. And I'm sure they'll be happy to see you as we move forward and hopefully increase capacity. Also, a special, I appreciate Deputy City Manager Opie bringing up those outstanding staff members that contributed above and beyond. I do want a special notice to Public Education Officer Sherry Guerrero, who completely changed the program that she does to online because I know the elementary school students always look forward to having her come out there. I was a part of a Rotary group that got to take one of her tests, and thank goodness I got a score high enough so I didn't have to go back to school again. But appreciate her extra effort in turning the virtual world into a lot of fun, even for adults. Thank you very much.
Mayor Pro Tem, thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to first give an update on my activities last week. On Wednesday afternoon, I was asked, along with nine other members of local governments throughout the United States to speak with the EPA Transition Team for the Biden Administration. So that was along with the National League of Cities and Water Now. And we were specifically talking to this team about the need for assistance from the federal government for water infrastructure. Cities across the nation are struggling with aging infrastructure, and we're looking for support from the federal government, particularly if there is an infrastructure bill. Obviously, Wednesday in Washington DC was a very unusual day. And the day after that conversation, I did see that there was a press release that they're recognizing that the EPA has undergone a lot of changes under the last four years, and it will be more difficult than originally anticipated to meet some of the goals of this administration, which is frustrating. Um, I do want to acknowledge that this is the first meeting of a new year, and I don't think there's very many people that were sad to see 2020 behind us. So I also am wishing for a better year ahead. I want to say thank you to all of the residents who took the time to either email, leave voicemails, or to call in. Freedom of speech and access to your representatives is an important and cherished right that each of us have. And it's important for us to be accessible. Often that those comments are heartwarming, such as Mr. Armstrong's comments about young Mariah Bell and her competitor training that started in Westminster or the service of Cindy Sullivan, who touched many young athletes. But oftentimes, it's more critical, and we are here to hear that, too. That's part of
And we are here to hear that too. That's part of protected free speech. I want to thank Deputy City Manager Barbara Opie for that really positive report of all of the good work that has been accomplished at the hands of city staff this last year. And the thank yous from our residents whom we serve. I also attended, and I apologize, I didn't say this in my updates, I also attended the inclusivity board's meeting on Saturday. And I was really heartened. This group is, this was a subcommittee that wants to work on raising awareness, education and communication on the issues of, of diversity and race and inclusion in our community. And they wanted to see how they could partner with the city in doing that. Parks, Recs, libraries, and they also wanted to make sure they had the support of council. So it was a great conversation and we have a lot of leaders who are dedicated to that cause. I do want to turn my direction onto the events of Wednesday. The assault at our Capitol, of our constitution and of our democratic republic. It's an action that was both heartbreaking and infuriating. As a horde of angry protesters, many wearing symbols of white supremacy, overwhelmed Capitol Police and defiled our US Capitol, I watched in horror with my children. Not since the War of 1812, when burned to the ground by the British, has our Capitol building been overtaken by violence. This includes the Civil War. My blood ran cold at the images of a man carrying the Confederate battle flag within the building, proudly displaying an emblem inside the Capitol by those who sought to undermine the democratic process. This reinforced mine and many others' suspicion that this group of rioters, or more accurately domestic terrorists, are only committed to an American democracy that prioritizes white supremacy. Wednesday's riot left five dead, including a police officer who was beaten by this mob of traitors. We also know an initial, an additional officer has passed, but the details of his death have not been released. As more information about the riots has become available over the last few days, it's become much more clear that the things could have been and were intended to be so much worse. This was much more coordinated, dark and violent than initially thought. I am thankful for the safety of our congressmen and women. I am proud of the heroic actions of members of Congress and the Capitol Police, including Colorado Representative Jason Crow, a combat veteran who jumped into action protecting, assisting and comforting other representatives. I take inspiration in the courage and tenacity of our Congress, who reconvened and confirmed the electoral win of our next president, Joe Biden, that very night. We have heard many times this week of the famous quote from founding father Benjamin Franklin when asked, while leaving the Constitutional Convention, "Well, Doctor, what have we got? A republic or a monarchy?" And without hesitation, his reply, "A republic, if you can keep it." Those words feel more prophetic today than ever. One of the hallmarks of this country, of our precious but fragile democratic republic, is the peaceful transition of power. This violent insurgency was a challenge to that tenant, to have our constitution and of our country. An angry mob wanted to overturn the results of our election, to disenfranchise voters, to take the power given to the next president of the United States by the people, a candidate who was duly elected. They wanted to take it away through intimidation and violence. This anger was stoked for months, even before the elections, with false warnings and later claims of election fraud and corruption. As elected officials, we have sworn an oath to the Constitution of the United States. It boggles my mind that any in this position of trust, of heightened responsibility, would allow politics to threaten the fabric of our democracy, that they would perpetuate lies at the expense of our nation. Tonight I feel it is my duty as an elected official to condemn the acts of unlawful violence by rioters who attacked the US Capitol and any parties that would call for the overthrow of our government. I ask all residents to join me in condemning this assault on our country. I thank Counselor Scully for her suggestion that we have a joint statement as a council and I support it. Those are my comments for tonight.
Counselor Volz?
Wow, that's hard to follow. Very powerful statements and I appreciate those words and they mean a lot. And Counselor Scully, you also. I, so I want to first start by just talking about a couple of meetings I attended last week. And I, it feels a little of a letdown after those powerful words, but let me cover a couple of quick things and then I'll, I'll say something as well. On Thursday, I had a chance to attend the 12th Annual Commuting Solutions Legislative Breakfast, which is very enlightening and it talked about different, what's happening in the, in the realm of transportation and commuting and public transportation. It was a really good session. And then on Saturday morning, I had a chance to attend the inclusivity board meeting and it was nice to see such a hardworking group, working for inclusivity and working for ways for everyone to participate in our, in our city and with our city government. So they're working very hard. It was an inspiring meeting and I was glad I was invited, was able to make it actually. I also want to thank Deputy City Manager Barbara Opie and City Manager Trip for, for their presentation or their update of what we did in this last year. It's a great way to start the new year by looking at all the great things they did last year and how we helped so many residents through a really awful time in the pandemic. So thank you for that. I think it's a great, great, great way to remind ourselves of all the great things that happened last year. I also want to say, I would like to see a statement from this council that also condemns violence. There's no place for violence at the national level or here in Westminster. And also a statement that includes respect and dignity and qualities. So all of those things, I, I also want to support that as well. So if we could have that conversation, I would support that 100%. Those are my comments for tonight. Thank you. And I, I want to commend my colleagues for powerful statements and I want to associate myself with wonderful comments tonight and a really tough time. So thank you.
Counselor Smith?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Hold on, let me get my thoughts in order. Thank you to Barbara Opie for letting us know the accomplishments that our city has achieved last year. It was a hard year for us to, to go through. So having those, those facts and what we were able to do for our community was very helpful and very heartwarming to see in here. And as Counselor Scully had mentioned, I was able to attend the Rocky Mountain Regional Airport's roundtable discussion and looking forward to the discussion that she mentioned. There were several elected officials on that and I invite our constituents to participate as well as we continue to hear and see that there's rising concerns about the issue. Some regarding noise, some of the items that were discussed in today's meeting that were a little bit eye opening to me and just as a reminder to me what the airport is. It's a self-supporting enterprise, which means that it essentially runs as a self-sustaining business. And they receive a lot of their grants from FAA and at the federal level. And there are regulations that are revolving around FAA bylaws. And there are certain things that they can and can't do, can't tell direction of flight, can't tell when to take, I don't want to say when to take off, but direction of flight was one of them. And then the timing of how they come in and how they drop and how they take off. So just fascinating things that we can obviously take back to our community and share with on what we learn. Again, also an opportunity for constituents to learn more about that. The, let's see, changing subjects. RTD just received the accountability report from the committee. This week, staff will be analyzing what that looks like and shortly thereafter, we'll be posting that on the website as far as the outcomes of what the accountability report has discovered and identified. RTD will, is set to receive about 203 million. And let me pull up that information. Let's see here. So RTD will be receiving 203 million through the coronavirus response and release of Supplemental Appropriations Act of 2021. They also received 232 million dollars in 2020. And this all goes to operational costs for helping residents get to and from essential places of work. And will help overall with the funding shortfalls that they have for 2020 and maybe into 2021. Regarding the inclusivity board attendance, I still wanted to attend, but I had a prior commitment on Saturday. But it sounds like a really great meeting was had by all. And turning my thoughts to last week's events or happenings. I, I look at this out of a broader perspective. We have a lot of work to do in our country, in our state, in our community. I feel quite often that we have forgotten the basis of which we were founded. We live in one of the greatest nations because we were founded by the people and for the people with government at the helm of the constitution to protect our liberties. And freedom of speech is one of them. And we all have the right to freedom of speech. However, there is no excuse for people that trespass, vandalize and ultimately break the law. I believe in law and order and what transpired from a minority, my minority of people cannot and should not be an overall blanket of thought to those who were peacefully assembling and to have their voices heard. But my thoughts and prayers are with anyone that this has impacted or affected. As much as people look to me and their elected leaders, I urge our community to look inside yourselves and not give up on working toward a stronger, better future. It's not just up to me or this council with words that we share to make that happen. It's upon all of us to peacefully use our voices to create our thoughts, share them, create action and be the change that we wish to see. Thank you.
Any other comments? All right. Seeing no other comments, we have two items. One, because of the timing that we've had to look at this as a potential statement by the city council, based on what happened last week, we will take that up tonight under item 12. When we get to that point. And a reminder, right after that, we'll go into an executive session as previously defined. I've had a short break before we go into the next item of business, which would be the consent agenda. So for the purpose of trying to get a short break in and then we can try to get through the business, we will recess until 8:00 PM. 8:00 PM will we return. So you have a short break now. Eight P M. We'll return. So you have a short break now. All right, Ms. Parker, are you ready?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor.
All right, for the record, it's eight P M. All council members are back, and I can visibly see they're all present. The next item on the agenda is the consent agenda is a group of routine matters to be acted on with a single motion and vote. I did not get an opportunity to poll the council before, but before I take the motion, does any member of council have an item they want removed from the consent agenda? All right, seeing none. Counselor Demott, if you would, please.
Thank you, Mayor. I move to adopt the consent agenda items eight A through eight D.
Mayor Pro Tem sites.
Second.
I have a motion in the second. This is a roll call vote. Ms. Parker, if you will.
Certainly, Mayor Atchison.
Yes.
Counselor Demott.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem sites.
Yes.
Counselor Seymour.
Yes.
Counselor Scully.
Yeah.
Counselor Smith.
Yes.
And Counselor Bowles.
Yes.
Well, thank you. The motion passes on a unanimous vote. Next item on the agenda is item number nine, appointment and resignation. As the council is aware, we've had a resignation of our current municipal judge, Judge Sores. And we are doing a temporary appointment of Judge Longtime tonight to serve out the remainder of that time until such time as a new permanent position is filled. Judge Sores has been kind enough, it looks like, at least on my note here, to come in and swear in her deputy as the new judge. So with that in mind, Judge Sores, if you would, please.
Thank you, Mayor, and can I just get a nod that everyone can hear me? I had to run from putting some kids to bed. I want to make sure I did everything okay, and Judge Longtime, you can hear me too. This is going to be my last time, at least in this capacity, addressing my seven fabulous bosses. So if you all can just bear with me for a few moments, I I just wanted to first start off by saying thank you. I have been one of your appointees for five years and a week exactly, and it has been an unbelievable time here. You know, I live in the city Westminster, so first and foremost, thank you for your service. And second, thank you for your support and direction for me, and we've had some amazing times, events, challenges. It's just been it's been awesome, and I can't thank you enough for that. I also, when I accepted as the presiding, I I didn't know all the ins and outs to include being a member of E L T, and that too has been such a gift. Working with those fine folks that are literally the experts in their respective fields, and I personally and professionally enjoy all of them. And my two colleagues, the appointee Don Tripp and appointee Dave Frankel, I could not have stood next to more amazing gentlemen on this journey. So to both of you for your friendship and your camaraderie, thank you. I also want to talk about for a moment the fine folks that you have at the court. We praise spirit values, and I'm telling you, that team there, they get it. And obviously, you know, we we talk about H R and how the the secret and the sauce, Dee, if you can hear me. The the greatness starts there because they continually hire fabulous people that really by character and integrity embrace our spirit values, and to see that collective team, and I'm talking city prosecutors, marshals, victim advocates, probation, the whole the whole bit, the clerks. To see them collectively just soar through the strangest of times that we've had this past year has been really inspiring. So for just this 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 ride, I want to say thank you. And the reason that we are here, of course, the real reason is not for me to take five minutes to say thank you for my my blessings, but to swear in Judge Longtime to be the acting presiding municipal judge, and I feel like that title has gotten longer. It's the acting presiding municipal court judge, and it was half that long when I when I took it four years ago. I want to talk for a moment about Judge Longtime because the concept or the context that brings him to the table is really important. He was city prosecutor for our city for three years. And then I was surprised to see his name in the poll for an associate judge. I was thrilled, but I was surprised because I didn't know him personally, and so I didn't know what his aspirations were. And then to see him go through the application process, what I want to do is take a moment to talk about the buckets that I put out for the panel members. And it was sort of their benchmarks to find that great candidate that we were looking for in the next associate judge. And the first is integrity and individual of high character who is not motivated by self, but by doing what is right. Demeanor, someone who can govern a courtroom from a position of strength, respect, and self-control. Leadership, a person who can discern when to lead and when to defer. Elevate, someone who equips others and lifts the overall environment. Humor, being able to laugh goes a long way. Initiative, an individual who has the motivation and ability to move the court forward. Legal acumen, someone who can give sound rulings that are clear and concise. Longevity, someone who is going to be with the city in this capacity for quite some time. Passion, excitement for the service and responsibility of being a judge for the city Westminster. Fit, someone who will work well with the entire court team. Succession, an individual who can step in as presiding judge and E L T member. Efficiency, someone who can run through a heavy docket without compromising justice. Investment, a person who looks for the opportunities to make an impact on an individual. Intuition, the elusive skill that can't be taught and tough to know if someone has it. And finally, ethical. An individual who has high work and professional ethics. So these were the buckets that I put out with the panels that were determining the next associate judge as well as our hallmark spirit values, and Jason Longtime just skyrocketed above those under other individuals. But then to see him in action since he took that oath back in May has been a humbling ride for me. He has been an incredible partner and leader and elevator, and I am not worried one ounce where the court is going to go because I've already seen what it does in his hands. So to you, Jason Longtime, I would just say thank you for accepting this oath. And as I told you at my farewell, that I don't take for granted. You didn't have to say yes. You were you were asked and council graciously agreed to offer this appointment. And thank you for being willing to do it because it certainly is a tall order, but you are very much up for it, and I thank you for that. So with that long-winded introduction, Jason Longtime, are you ready to take your oath as the acting pre-presiding municipal court judge?
Absolutely. Thank you.
That mean you're standing now?
It feels appropriate.
I have to ask, are you wearing like tennis shoes or what do you? This is our first virtual oath because when he was sworn in as the associate back in May, we were able to do it in person, even though it was still during COVID. So with that, Jason Longtime, we have you raise your right hand to take the oath. And I, Jason Longtime.
I, Jason Longtime.
Do solemnly swear that I will support.
Do solemnly swear that I will support.
The constitutions of the United States.
The constitutions of the United States.
And of the state of Colorado.
And of the state of Colorado.
And the ordinances in city charter.
And the ordinances in city charter.
Of the city of Westminster.
Of the city of Westminster.
And faithfully perform the duties of.
And faithfully perform the duties of.
Acting presiding municipal court judge.
Acting presiding municipal court judge.
Upon which I'm about to enter.
Upon which I'm about to enter.
Please let me be the first to congratulate you, and I am honored for this to be my last official business. Judge Longtime, I turn it over to you.
Well, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, and and members of council. I'm truly honored to be sworn in tonight as the acting presiding municipal court judge. And thank you, Judge Sores, for all that that you've done for me as a mentor and all that you've done for the court and community. It is a big loss to us and a huge gain to the seventeenth, and I know we're going to be hearing amazing things, and so we're all giving a heartfelt best wishes to you and and all of your future. Just just briefly, since I joined the city four years ago, it's it's been an absolute privilege to be a part of this organization. And as the acting presiding judge, I will continue to put our spirit values at the forefront of everything we do here at the court. We've gone through a lot in the last year in two thousand and twenty. But I think the coming months hold a lot of promise. And I look forward to leading the court as we continue to respond to the challenges of COVID. We start reopening our doors and and reengage our wellness court and develop new collaborations to better keep our community safe and and serve the citizens of our city. I'm very excited and for the opportunity to work together with all of you in council, with E L T and departments across the city to keep serving the people of Westminster, and it really truly is an honor to be stepping into this role. And I thank you all for for the trust that you've placed in me. Thank you.
So that's not to screw up the entire title. I'm just going to refer to you as your honor. So, Your Honor, we thank you for taking this step with us. We appreciate your stepping up for this position, knowing that we have a lot of things that's going to go through the courts as they start to reopen as the COVID numbers continue to go down. And with the experience and dedication that you bring, we are very glad to have you. And I'm sure you will work together with the Mr. Tripp and Mr. Frankel to continue the great success that we've had at the courts over the last few years. Gosh, I can't hardly talk to you, Tiffany, without saying, Your Honor. But now you're going back, you're not leaving the community. You're going to still be with us here with the Seventeenth Judicial District. As a Deputy D A, we welcome you back. I know that's an office that you are familiar with, since we we tried to steal you and keep you, but that didn't work out too well. So I'm going to have a talk with Brian Mason probably in the next few days about some of his choices. But best of you, best of luck to you, and congratulations on the new position you have with the Seventeenth Judicial District. We wish you the best. And you always know where home is, that.
You got it, Mayor. Thank you. Thank you, everyone. It's been a pleasure.
All right, counsel, we'll move on at this point to the next item on the agenda. This is item ten A one. This is a public hearing. Mr. Tripp, would you like to have somebody from staff start this?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Rita McConnell is here this evening, I believe, to begin the the this particular item. Rita?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor and counselors. Matt, can we get the presentation brought up, please? Thank you. This is Rita McConnell. I'm the Planning Manager in the Community Development Department. I am pleased to be presenting to you the proposed Westminster Municipal Code Amendment to expand the required mail notification area for development-related projects that do require a public hearing. Next slide, please. This proposal comes before you this evening in response to the request by council at the November thirtieth City Council Study Session. Council expressed an interest to increase the notification area for mail notice of public hearings. As part of bringing this code amendment before you, a staff agenda memo has been created, and tonight's public hearing has been properly noticed. The agenda memo, its associated attachments, tonight's PowerPoint presentation, and the public notice published in the Westminster window are hereby entered into the public record at this time. Next slide, please. The city currently requires a minimum three hundred foot notification radius for land development-related projects requiring a public hearing. The radius starts at the outer edge of the subject property boundaries. If the radius distance even touches the property by even an inch, it is included in the notification. If an H O A is included in any property that is within or near the notification area, they are notified as well. H O As typically inform all the properties within the boundaries of the H O A, which increases the notification area well beyond the three hundred feet. The Westminster Municipal Code also allows discretion to expand the required notification area based on certain attributes of the subject area. We have done this numerous times in the past. There are additional means of public notification that I will refer to in slide seven, since they will also applies to apply to the proposed amendment as well. Next slide, please. The city commonly considers other jurisdiction standards when evaluating amendments to our code. This allows us to see if we are proposing less, about the same, or more than others require. This approach is not exact science, but serves as a useful comparative tool. It is certainly up to each jurisdiction as a home rule government to decide what distance is preferred. Staff has evaluated eleven jurisdictions that we typically benchmark with and found that they provide a comprehensive range of notification distances to compare with. Our analysis found that eight of the eleven jurisdictions require a five hundred foot notification area or less for rezonings, development plans, and special use permits. Two jurisdictions require a thousand feet and one requires fifteen hundred feet. Eight of the eleven jurisdictions require a three hundred foot notification area or less for variances. Three require three or five hundred feet. Less notification is typically required for variances due to the scale and impact of these cases compared to the other development applications. Next slide, please. This graphic is intended to show the impact of notification use in three notification areas. The graphic represents a typical infill land use pattern seen in the city. In this example, the three hundred foot notification area results in notification to sixty six properties. The five hundred foot results in notification to a hundred and fifty one properties or two point three times the number of properties from the current standard. A thousand feet results in notification to four hundred and seven properties or six point two times the number of properties from the current standard. The number of individual properties that will actually be notified will be dependent on the actual size of the subject parcel and the size of the surrounding adjacent parcels. Larger development parcels in denser adjacent areas will result in more individual notifications. Next slide, please. Staff is recommending a minimum three hundred foot notification for variances. This is within the upper range of other jurisdictions and does not change our current standard. Staff is recommending a minimum five hundred foot notification for all other development applications. This is largely consistent with other jurisdictions and increases the current notification area by two hundred feet. Staff is also recommending worse myth changes to the Community Development Director's authority to expand the notification area. The intent is to make it clear to the developer and the adjacent property owners under what circumstances it makes sense to go beyond the code. There is no limit to how far the notification area can be expanded. It is highly dependent on the area conditions, such as complexity and scale of the project, degree of potential impacts, and geographic reach of those impacts, and compatibility concerns of the neighborhood. Next slide, please. This slide pertains to the existing notification procedures as well as the proposed procedures. In addition to the required mail notification, the Westminster Municipal Code also requires signposting of the property and publication in the newspaper. The remaining other means of notification listed on this slide are not the rule but are generally accepted practice in many situations. but are generally accepted practice in many situations. As previously mentioned, distribution by HOAs can greatly increase the notification boundary area. Notification to interested groups and individuals is easily accommodated upon request. We honor individual requests often as a result of neighborhood meetings. Attendees who show up by word of mouth from their neighbors or from other information sources regularly are included in future email notifications for public hearings. We often use the city's website, the electronic newsletter titled The Weekly, and social media, which includes Nextdoor, Twitter, and Facebook. We use these resources as a complimentary way of messaging reminders about a public or virtual meeting's date, time, location, and any pertinent details of what the meeting is regarding and how to participate. For example, this might be done for Planning Commission and Council meetings as well as required neighborhood meetings and other informational meetings as appropriate. Next slide, please. Staff finds that the proposed notification area is a solid recommendation at this time based upon the benchmark jurisdiction analysis and the fact that we can expand the notification area without limit based on site circumstances and conditions. We also effectively achieve a much greater notification area with all the other methods of informal notification as discussed. We can further evaluate the official notification area as planned in the future with the code update project when we are also afforded the opportunity to incorporate stakeholder outreach on this distance requirement as well. Staff's recommendation is to hold the public hearing and pass Counselor's Bill Number 1. Next slide, please. The proposed code amendment supports a key strategic plan goal for visionary leadership, effective governance, and proactive regional collaboration. Next slide, please. This concludes staff's presentation. I want to thank you for your attention. I'm available to answer any questions that you may have.
Mr. Tripp, before I open it up for council questions, do you have any other comments or anybody else who wants to provide information on this from staff?
No, sir. If you've got, if there are questions, I'm going to go ahead and ask Rita to the extent that you can handle the questions yourself. Just go right ahead, please.
All right. Counsel, at this time, I'll open it up to any council members who have questions of staff that they'd like to discuss. And I will start with Counselor Smith.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Perfect. Thank you. I had to throw on my headphones here. One of the, in the staff report, it said that increasing the distance beyond 500 feet would have more significant impacts. Could you walk me through what those significant impacts might be?
To go from 500 feet to perhaps 1,000 feet?
Yes.
Yeah. So in, I think it's slide number five, I showed the impact of how many more properties would be noticed. So that would require additional mailing notice to those particular property owners. It really depends on how dense the development is around it as to how many more would be included in that.
Okay, and that would be our impacts is just increasing the number of folks that we notify?
That would be in terms of the mailing impacts. I believe that Dave Frankel might be able to indicate some other impacts that are not related to the mailing notice. I believe he is on this evening. Or not?
I am. Thank you, Ms. McConnell. I am here. So yes, expansion of the radius has literal mailing impacts and the costs of generating those mailings based on the radius. Other things to consider are that standing is often conferred on those who are legally entitled to notice. So one other thing to take into consideration would be the expansion of the pool of those with standing to challenge whatever the decision is that is made at the hearing. So that's one thing I think to consider. I think, you know, certainly looking at our neighboring jurisdictions for guidance, I would recommend taking those distances into consideration as you deliberate tonight as to whether you're comfortable with a 500-foot radius as proposed by the staff recommendation.
Great, thank you. That's more helpful to know. Ms. McConnell, my last two questions revolve on posted on these or at these locations.
The HOA notification is included as part of the property boundaries currently and in the proposal. So if they, that HOA, if there's a property that falls within that notification area and they are associated with an HOA, they are included.
Okay. And then also with our websites, I was just referencing the slide that you had where it says mandatory and then the rest did not.
Yeah, on the slide that said mandatory, that was referencing the signposting as well as the newspaper publication. The HOA additional notification is where they then send out the notice that they receive to all the properties that are outside that notification area. So if, for example, if there's one property that's in the 500-foot notification area, it would also go to that associated HOA that that property is in. Then that HOA can notice all of the remaining properties in the HOA boundaries.
Okay, perfect. That answers my questions for now. I will relinquish my time. Thank you.
Counselor Demont?
I just was curious on the 1,000 foot, if you went 1,000 feet versus 500, what the impact to the city would be? Because I noticed there was 1,000 foot with Broomfield and it looked like Thornton was 1,500 feet if I'm not mistaken. And those are pretty comparable cities, although Arvada, another comparable city, they aren't that large. But it just makes me wonder if we were to expand it even greater than 500 feet, you know, what would the impact be to staff?
So the impact would be based on the example I provided. And again, that example was really just chosen because it is pretty typical infill. It increased it. Let's see, the 500-foot notification area had 151 properties. The 1,000-foot notification had 407 properties.
Can I, yeah, and I saw that. So let me rephrase what I'm looking for is because the more, the better. And I have to give all my colleagues, especially Counselor Smith, a shout out for really pushing on widening these notifications. But with seeing those numbers, I'm curious why we don't go larger? Because I think if we went larger, I think that's more participation and more people seeing the new developments as we come closer to build out. I think that's important that people in the community have a say in these different developments or redevelopments. So I'm just trying to understand, you know, is there a big reason not to go bigger?
Okay, so yeah, I think you're referencing, why don't we go with the larger numbers at the benchmark jurisdictions that some of them show?
Correct.
Correct, yeah. So that was a conscious decision and probably a debate as we talked about the notification area. And when we looked at those benchmark jurisdictions, some of them were recently modified from 300 feet to 500 feet in those jurisdictions as well, based on everyone's need to have more opportunities for input. At some point, there is an endpoint of how much notification area do you do? You try to take a kind of the average of what jurisdictions generally do to be competitive in the development world, so to speak. Developers compare what other cities do and they say, well, why do you require so much more than this jurisdiction? It's more of a burden to us, you know, and that's just one of the considerations. So we really try to be fairly consistent with what our neighbors are doing. But that doesn't mean that you have to be the same. You have to make that decision for your jurisdiction based on what you think the needs are for that jurisdiction. Staff's opinion is that we recommend that consistency at this point in time without having stakeholder input of developers and chambers of commerce. We would really like to look at anything beyond the typical notification area when we do the code update because then we can tap into those stakeholders and also consider their opinions and impacts to them in expanding that notification. We're really comfortable with the 500 foot going beyond that. We really would want to get more stakeholder input.
Okay, that makes perfect sense and is exactly what I was curious about. I would, you know, I appreciate this presentation. It's really thorough. I appreciate your guys' work on this. I certainly wouldn't, I would welcome going bigger, but it does make sense to me that we would want stakeholders involved. So my hope would be that we get to approve this tonight and that, you know, sooner rather than later, we get to actually look at what it would be with our shareholders to see about making it even bigger so that we get more inclusive results from our community. So, but thank you very much for this work and answering my questions.
Counselor Stelling?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Actually, my questions have been answered. But I would echo that I would be a little bit more comfortable with a larger setback or a larger number. 1,000 seems very reasonable, but I do understand the competitiveness in development. So I will go ahead and I will vote in favor of the 500. Thank you.
Mayor Protem, slide?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, Ms. McConnell, for this presentation and for the report. I agree that it was very detailed and gave us good benchmarking from our surrounding communities. I did have a question and I just want to make sure I'm understanding this correctly. If within our existing 300 radius or if tonight's proposal is approved, the 500 radius, the community that's impacted, that's within that radius is an HOA, then all of the residents, even those outside of the radius are notified? Is that correct?
Now, let me be very clear about that. It's typical for an HOA, once they receive notice, to share that with their entire HOA membership. It's not a city requirement, but it's typical for them to do that on their own. If a, if even one property is in an HOA and we only notify that one property as part of the notification boundary, say 500 feet, the HOA would get the notice as well. And then it's up to them to distribute it to their HOA membership, which is a very common thing for them to do.
Correct, and that additional information benefits the residents of those HOAs. But I have a little bit of concern because, you know, we have a large portion of our town that has HOAs and then another portion of our town that does not. And oftentimes, it is a little more difficult to, without a single point of contact, to get information to those residences. And so I worry about kind of that disparity of information already existing. Since I've been on council, I've really pushed for increased transparency in local government and also citizen engagement. And in fact, it's, you know, embedded within our strategic plan. As part of the Westminster Forward and more specifically the Code Forward, Counselor Demont and I were the two council representatives who sat in on that. And I've asked through those stakeholder meetings that we participated in, I did mention the desire to have kind of a larger radius and then also, you know, improving our signs, making it really, if we're asking for community input, making it more easily available, what information, you know, what development is going on in our city. I do think oftentimes when we run into kind of prickly development situations, one of the things we hear from our residents is a frustration that they didn't know what was happening until there was a lot of momentum on the project. And so it honestly, I appreciate the benchmarking, but I was surprised that we were, you know, that we were such laggards. You're not laggards, outliers, I guess, with how prevalent for the last seven years that goal of transparency and community engagement had been. And then that we were only bringing it up to kind of the bare minimum. You know, I think we have to make sure we protect that property owner too, that, that, you know, we don't want an obnoxious requirement that's so large that we're giving standing to people who would not be impacted at all by the development. But I also think it's a certain, you know, I think there's a reasonable level of wanting to increase that notice. And so I actually find myself in the circumstance where I agree with Counselor Demont and Counselor Smith. If not tonight, at some point, and at some point in the near future, I would like to see that extended to perhaps 750 feet. Some, something that's pushing the envelope because I think that value, that goal of transparency and community engagement and proactive leadership is something we all share, this whole council, without putting an undue burden on the owner of that property or on the, you know, the marketability of that property.
Yes.
So I guess more of my thoughts than questions, but that's what I'm pondering right now as we open the public hearing.
Counselor Vols?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I also strongly support transparency and community participation. So I have a quick question about going from 300 to 500. Are we, on average, doubling the number of people who we will be required, or the developer will be required to reach out to? Is that roughly what I saw?
Yeah, it was just a little over two times the amount, and that's just with the mail notification. Forget how many people see the sign, how many people see the newspaper, not as many, right? And all the other sources we use, but for the mail notification, it is just slightly more than doubling.
Yeah, thank you for that answer. That's good. I think that's excellent. And then I do have a question about the signage. I know about a year or two ago, we talked about taking the signage requirements and having to put that requirement on the developer because, right, it has been on the city. We had some issues, some signs going down. And while we then talked about putting that onus on the developer, the signage on the property, because they have a real vested interest to make sure that signage works, it's visible. Because if it's not, then what happened about a year, a year and a half ago, we put a project on delay because we needed to go through the notice of the community again through the signage. What, have we changed that or are we planning to change that or has it already changed? And maybe I voted for it and I forgot. So can you help with that?
Certainly. Right now, in terms of the consistency of the material sign, staff is preparing those signs, but we have put the obligation on the developer to actually go out and make sure that the signs are up on a daily basis. We have also requested that the developer put the signs up a few days sooner than the required notification period just in case they're down a day or two due to wind damage. They would still meet the number of days required because we've asked them to put it up sooner than the 10 days required. So the burden is on the applicant to inform us of the need for new signs, but we still prepare them.
Well, we talked about this a year or so ago. I know that we had mentioned that it seemed like other communities had switched to having the developer be in charge of that. Are we, and we had kind of all, I think, agreed on that. Is this a change we're going to make at any time? Are we considering that or is it off the table?
Yeah, we are definitely looking at that because that would save staff time and energy. But right now, the efficiency is in having staff prepare to get that consistent quality of materials.
Okay. I would like to see that switch, but thank you for that. And then also I've heard kind of through the grapevine is Community Development Department. As far as transparency, are we working on, or is the city working on a renewed kind of easy-to-read, one-place, kind of one-shop stop, you know, stop where we can see all the developments in one place and click on that, making it much easier for residents who have a question? Because before, I have to admit, you might look in several different places. Are we, it's my understanding we have people working on a one-stop shop kind of website with all the developments and where they are in the process, a map of where they are. Is that true or where are we in that?
Yes, that's absolutely true. It is a webpage within the city's website and our communication folks have created a template for that and we have projects on that page as well. And it really is kind of the user-friendly description of the project with a And it really is kind of the user-friendly description of the project with visuals. Because the other resource was track it, e-track it, and that's often hard for people to navigate.
Yes.
The more user-friendly, quick reference for all the of the current development projects. And so, yes, it's out there, it's on the website, go look at it. It's great.
I will do that. Thank you, because I think that's important. I think the more transparency, the easier it is for residents to click on that, the easier and the better it is for everyone. So thank you for those answers. I plan on supporting the 500. I think I agree with my colleagues that if we are in this same position next year, we have more information and we need to expand it, I would be willing to do that. But for now, I think we're more than doubling the the number of people notified when we go from 300 to 500. So I would support this with the caveat that we look at what are the advantages to expand it to 750 to 1,000 and then, you know, if if there's a good argument for that, I certainly would support that. So thank you for those answers.
And if I can just interrupt, I apologize. The doubling of the notification was based on the typical infill example we provided. Keep in mind, if it's more dense, it's going to be more than doubling. If it's less dense, it may not be so because we do have some areas of the city that have large parcels, more rural in nature.
Counselor Demont?
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Counselor Vols, for bringing up the the thing about the website. And the only thing I wanted to ask actually was if staff would be so kind, maybe after this meeting, especially if this passes, if you could share that link to where that is on our website, on our social media. I think it would be a great opportunity for folks that may be listening tonight to highlight the fact that we have that. And that's all I wanted to add. Thank you.
Mayor Proton?
Thank you. I'd even written it down and forgot to ask it. I wanted to know, do we send our notification or do we have the developer rather send their notification to the owner of the properties or also to the occupant? So for instance, if it's a renter or do we do it to both? So if the owner lives away, we send it to them, but also to the renter that's going to be impacted directly?
It is to the property address.
Is that considered a best practice or do other jurisdictions do both? So for instance, if I owned a property but was not living in it, but would still be impacted, you know, financially or potentially by the by the development, would I, how would I find out about that if my tenant didn't alert me?
I am pausing because I'm sending out a text for help on this question.
Oh, I apologize. It was not, it's not a trick. I just wanted to.
I think one of the pieces in there, Ms. McConnell, is how would you know that the property has a renter living in it versus the owner?
Andrew Spurgeon to the rescue, he can address this question.
Mr. Spurgeon, go ahead. Maybe.
Maybe he can text me.
Ms. McConnell, if you'd like to prepare a response for that and send it out tomorrow, we can do that also.
Okay, and if I can get a quick one from Andrew, I'll go ahead and address it. If not, I'll do that. I'll send it out.
Okay, it would be kind of relevant to the vote if this, I am, I am curious as far as.
Okay.
Reason being, the county clerk would presumably know who has the owns the property. It doesn't seem like that's information that's not within access.
Yeah, let me see what Andrew is going to, but John said I had it backwards. We send it to the owner, the owner would have to know notice the renter.
That is concerning to me. I would like it to go to both the renter and the owner.
Okay, that that should be.
And I believe Adams County recently changed it to that as well. Renters should have as much as many rights as as property owners.
Okay, you know, let us, I presume you want the answer on that right now. What I'm thinking is that, for example, apartment complexes, if, you know, we can easily access the owner's information, but it may be even more difficult to get to the individual renters. I think we need to spend a little time figuring that out.
Yeah, that's my concern. It's not a matter of being for or against the policy. It's just making sure we're accurate and we're talking about what best practice is out there and what's being done. I just want to make sure we've got that accurate.
Yes.
And I believe this is an evolving best practice that has changed over time in many communities. I believe that this has been in a in an attempt for equity in the community is in in other places has has been a change, which was why I brought it up. But I understand needing the time, just like maybe an additional setback, we'd need to talk to stakeholders, but I I just wanted to raise it tonight.
Okay, is it fair enough to say that the way we've been doing is consistent with past practices and that would be carried over right now? But as we explore additional expansion of area, we would also look at expansion to include renters along with the owners.
Ms. McConnell, what's the process look like that we spoke about before? That will be reviewing this as a part of the Westminster Forward program and getting stakeholder feedback? What's the timing of that, would you think?
Andrew's going to give me the latest, greatest timing for the code via text in a moment. This is one of the areas that we definitely wanted to evaluate because we've heard this concern from you in the past as part of the code update. We really wanted to address the urgency of it now because we sensed this was more of an imminent urgency to expand area. So let me get the more accurate timing from Andrew and we'll make sure that we cover both aspects of it. Okay, now he's indicating that it's later 2021 for Code Forward with two task force meetings in the meantime. Once the draft code is prepared, we will need a period of testing with projects. So I don't have an exact time, but it's going to be in 2021 later in the year.
So you could approve this tonight or you could defer it. You could table this tonight until we get the answers to these questions. If you if you approved it tonight, know that we'll be back by the end of the year and and have some stakeholder feedback on the distance also. And we could do both at once, but it's really, really is your call. Just wanted to give you some options.
Thank you.
Counselor Seymour, I'm not sure. Do you still have a comment or did you withdraw? Okay. All right, is there any other council members who have not had a chance to provide a comment that are interested in providing comments? I think one of the things that we've all indicated, we want the right people involved in the decision process and the fact that we've not had stakeholders involved, that to approve it tonight is is an interim step. It's not the final step. And as they have indicated, we'll move forward with looking at this as we move forward with Code Forward. And then I'm going to try if I can find, I want to go back to the original person at 8:45. Said they wanted to make the motion, that's Counselor Seymour. And then I have Counselor Smith that wanted to make the second. Counselor Seymour, if you will, in just a minute, I got to close out the public hearing first. All right, any other last comments from the staff, Mr. Tripp?
Mr. Mayor, this is, oh, sorry, go ahead, John.
Excuse me, I don't have any other comments. I just want to thank Rita and her and her team for the work they did on this. And tell you, counsel, I think this is a good idea. And the more that we can do to let people know what's going on in our city, the better. And we just want to make sure we balance that with the impacts that it would have. So thank you for raising this and thank you, staff.
All right, so that concludes the portion of the council questions for staff. I still have to open this up for public comments. So I'm going to do that at this time. It's approximately 8:50 and I will now open it up for comments. And Ms. Parker, I think you received two emails that have been entered into the record in regards to this application for tonight.
That is correct, Mr. Mayor. Also, just wanted to mention for the record that there were no members of the public who requested to speak live during the public hearing, nor did we receive any voicemails on this particular item for public hearing this evening. So the two emails are the total of public comment that we received.
Okay, thank you. Seeing no one in from the public that's here to testify either through email or through voicemail tonight, I will now close the public hearing. Counselor Seymour, I will come back to you for the motion and Counselor Smith for the second.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move to pass Counselors Bill number one on first reading to approve the proposed amendment to the Westminster Municipal Code relative to notification by mail of land development public hearings.
Counselor Smith?
Second.
I have a motion in a second. Any other questions or comments from council? All right, seeing none, this is roll call vote. Ms. Parker, this is Counselors Bill number one, please.
Counselor Demont?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Sights?
Yes.
Counselor Seymour?
Yes.
Counselor Scully?
Yes.
Counselor Smith?
Yes.
Counselor Vols?
Yes.
And Mayor Atchison?
Yes, thank you, counsel. The counsel bill number one passes on a 7-0 vote. Moving on to the next item of business, this is item B1. This is Counselors Bill number two. Counselor Demont?
Thank you, Mayor. I move to pass Counselor Bill number two on first reading authorizing the city manager to execute the Second Amendment to the City of Westminster Northwest Rail Electrified Segment Westminster Station intergovernmental agreement with the Regional Transportation District regarding the construction and maintenance associated with the Westminster Fast Tracks Rail Station in substantially the same form as it's presented.
Counselor Scully?
I second.
I have a motion in a second. Any comments or questions by council? Counselor Smith?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted for transparency reasons to and from the public that I do in fact work for RTD and just wanted to get it on the record that this will have no impact as far as employment and employment with the city. So just wanted to get that on the record. Thanks.
Thank you, ma'am. Any other comments or questions by council? All right, seeing none. Ms. Parker, this is item B1, Counselors Bill number two, if you would, this is a roll call vote.
Certainly, Mr. Mayor. Mayor Proton Sights?
Yes.
Counselor Seymour?
Yes.
Counselor Scully?
Yes.
Counselor Smith?
Yes.
Counselor Vols?
Yes.
Mayor Atchison?
Yes.
And Counselor Demont?
Yes.
All right, thank you, counsel. Counselor Bill number two, the first half of this item passes on a 7-0 vote. Counselor Demont, if you would, the second half of this item.
Yes, sir. Move to pass Counselor Bill number three on first reading authorizing the city manager to execute the Second Amendment to the City of Westminster's Northwest West Rail Electrified Segment Local Agency Contribution intergovernmental agreement with Regional Transportation District regarding the city's local agency contribution for Fast Tracks Northwest Rail Electrified Segment in substantially the same form as presented.
Counselor Scully?
I second.
I have a motion in a second to your discussion by members of the council. All right, seeing none on this item, I will move on to roll call vote for Counselors Bill number three.
Counselor Seymour?
Yes.
Counselor Scully?
Yes.
Counselor Smith?
Yes.
Counselor Vols?
Yes.
Mayor Atchison?
Yes.
Counselor Demont?
Yes.
And Mayor Proton Sights?
Yes.
All right, counsel, the counsel bill number three is passed on a 7-0 vote as well. And I'm trying to watch the sequence of all the ones I've got in here right now, so hang on just a second. All right, the first one on the motion would be the Mayor Proton Sights for item 2C. And the second would be Counselor Smith.
I move to pass Counselors Bill number four, an emergency ordinance ratifying the city manager's emergency order imposing a temporary cap of 15% on third-party restaurant delivery fees within the city.
I have a motion, Counselor Smith?
Second.
Okay, I have a motion in a second for Counselor Bill number four. Other comments on this item? And trying to move Counselor Demont, I think, are you having a comment? Are you waiting for a future motion?
I have a comment, sir.
Go ahead.
And actually, potentially a clarification, one quick question I have that I want to make sure I understand with this is when this and the end date is reached on this, would it have to come back to council to renew this if we wanted to? Or would the city manager be able to do that without council?
The only way that I think the city manager would be able to do this without you, Mr. Frankel, I should probably just shut my mouth right now, actually. But I I would say, Dave, in support of what I think you're going to say, that I would certainly honor coming back to you, even if my exec, even if my emergency authorization were extended beyond March 31st, I would understand that you might want to actually review this one. And if it were acceptable, the city attorney, I could commit to that this evening.
Yeah, I would recommend, so obviously the current order expires March 31st. If council wants to end it sooner, you certainly can do that. If you want to extend it, I suppose you have a couple of ways to accomplish that. You could either extend it yourselves or you could have the city manager enter a new order, which then you would be asked to consider for ratification, just as you are considering the current order for ratification tonight. Great, thank you very much. So a couple of quick comments on this. I know this is an item I've got a little fiery about a couple of times and I want to explain something. I do think that the position that are that we're in economically with this is is bad government, in my opinion. However, that's government, that's not the city of Westminster. I think that the city of Westminster has tried to do its best to figure out how to allow our businesses to survive with rules that are put on them, either from the Health Department and or the state. Sometimes both, sometimes, you know, the Health Department gets what the state says. So I know that this is a difficult time and this is to try to help those businesses survive when they're at a limited capacity. And so I wanted to make sure that I was clear about what my objective is because I realized after the last time we talked about this, you know, we often things, we know what we're talking about and I think it's often comes off as a blanket statement and I want, I don't want the the hard work of our our staff to go unspoken. Because I think, you know, you came up with a solution and although in a normal circumstance, I would never agree to something like this. And I think this is good in the circumstances that we're in to try to help these businesses survive. And that is the reason that I'm going to support it. So thank you very much.
Counselor Vols?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to make a brief comment. I will be supporting this tonight and for a couple of couple of reasons, well, for a few, but I'll mention a couple. It's my understanding, the drafting of this legislation, when it was first drafted, that the delivery companies did have a lot of ability to be involved and they did collaborate all along the way and did not oppose this bill. So that's, that meant a lot to me when I heard that and read that. So and then also I think it's an excellent way to help our our local restaurants. I think this is an excellent way to help our local restaurants without burdening our taxpayers. So I think it's a a nice way to do both things. So and our taxpayers do not aren't burdened by this. So I will be supporting it tonight for those two reasons. Thank you.
Mayor Proton?
Thank you. So obviously, the pandemic has impacted how many businesses operated operate, but none have been, well, few have been impacted as dramatically as our restaurants. And so for many of them to choose to continue to operate, they did not have the infrastructure in place or the logistic planning in place to offer delivery services. So they were forced in a lot of a lot of situations to operate at a loss when utilizing these delivery services. So what we're doing tonight is, you know, through March, making sure that they are not charged an exorbitant fee, but a fair fee so that no one's profiting off of a national and a worldwide crisis unfairly. And so what we're doing, as Counselor Vols said, was enable And so what we're doing, as Counselor Bowles said, was enabled by legislation earlier this year that had stakeholder input, and I'm very comfortable voting yes tonight, because I think this council, all of us have worked really hard to try to support our local business community, including those restaurateurs. So I will be voting yes.
Counselor Smith?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, a few weeks ago, I couldn't sign on to a letter that from council that would request more federal funding in response to this pandemic, and I ultimately felt it was another Band-Aid to a larger problem that we are facing, not fully operating in our economy. Looking further into this cap, I've talked with several more members of our community, as well as restaurant owners and the Westminster Chamber, and there are lots of pros and cons, certainly, that have been brought up, and I've been very torn as far as a decision on moving which way or not. And while I agreed to bring this forward and bring this back to council for official vote through my research, I just can't approve this. I believe that this is another Band-Aid to a larger problem, not fully having our restaurants open to operate at 100% capacity. And so again, this was a really hard decision to make, and I know that, that like I said, I had originally thought that I could bring this forward for a vote, but I just can't through my research. So I will be voting no tonight.
Other comments from counsel? Seeing no other comments, this is item 10D. I'm sorry, 10C, Counselors Bill number four. Ms. Parker, this is a roll call vote, please.
Counselor Scully?
Yes.
Counselor Smith? Counselor Bowles?
Yes.
Mayor Atchison?
Yes.
Counselor Demott?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem sites?
Yes.
And Counselor Seymour?
Yes.
Thank you, counsel. The vote passes on a six to one vote. Moving on to item 10D. Counselor Seymour?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Move based on the recommendation of the city manager to determine that the public interest will be best served by utilizing negotiated rates for the purchase of library materials, electronic resources, and services for the Westminster Public Library for a grand total not to exceed $950,000 for 2021 from the following vendors: Baker &amp; Taylor, not to exceed $300,000; Midwest Tapes, not to exceed $200,000; OneDrive Inc., not to exceed $200,000; Library Corporation, not to exceed $100,000; Cirrus Kinix, not to exceed $75,000; and Tech Logic, not to exceed $75,000.
Counselor Demott?
Second.
And have a motion and a second. Now opening up for questions, Mayor Pro Tem, you had a question?
I do have a quick question. Earlier, I guess late last year, through the budget discussion, I had consistently talked about our libraries potentially being a avenue to combat the digital divide through the ability to check out portable hotspots. I read through the staff report, and it was very well-written and comprehensive, and I thank the staff for all of their efforts on it, but it didn't appear that there was any money allocated for these programs. And so if not, perhaps it's there and I missed it. So if it's there, please, please enlighten me. If it's not there, do we intend to see something forthcoming, and if not, why?
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. We certainly recall and know of your support and the counsel's support for providing whatever assistance we can to overcome the digital divide that's so much more apparent during these times. There's good news here. The answer is yes. It's not included in this particular purchase, but it is planned to be rolled out with the library department's new mobile service that's going to be coming on board about April, and it's been ordered as a part of that mobile service. So there will be some mobile hotspots available with that. In addition to that, the library intends to come back for approval of a purchase for mobile hotspot technology that would be, that would be available as a pilot project to rent out within our library. So it's forthcoming, it just is not part of this project. And of course, we're looking at all different kinds of ways that we can even work within the business community to find more locations to make these hotspots available to folks. But short answer is, you're going to see it as a part of the new mobile library system in April.
Thank you so much for that answer, and that is definitely heartening to hear. I do want to say I appreciate all of those professionals in our libraries who worked on curating these acquisitions and purchases to help us have a more robust set of offerings. And I'm talking about the purchases in the, in the agenda item that we'll be approving tonight. And thank you for hearing us and doing work that'll be forthcoming.
Counselor Scully?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. When I was listening to Counselor Seymour read the recommendation, I thought I heard him say OneDrive versus Overdrive, and I just wanted to make sure that it was Overdrive Inc., not to exceed $200,000. That's all.
Good, thank you. Counselor Bowles?
Yeah, thank you. I, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I also want to add my name in support of the hotspot availability. I think that's very important, and I want to thank Mayor Pro Tem sites for bringing that up. I think it's that kind of thing that levels the playing field, and I think there are people who need that service, and it helps our residents. So I strongly support that. I want to thank the Mayor Pro Tem for bringing that up. And then I do have a quick question. It mentioned library kiosk. Can someone tell me, is there someone around who can tell me what the kiosk is? If it's what I think it is, it sounds really cool, but I want to hear more about that, because I don't know what a library kiosk is. Counselor Bowles, I'd like to invite J.R. Clanton or Jason Gang, the director, either, that might want to come on and answer that question. Please join us here on air.
Thank you, city manager, Trip, and thank you for the question, Counselor Bowles. Jason Gang, Director of Park Recreation Libraries, and I'm happy to answer this on behalf of libraries. The kiosk is a program, I guess in a way similar to the Redbox program, whereby folks can reserve materials at locations throughout the city where the kiosk is located, and folks can come and pick them up at their, at their local convenience. And that is capable, that's possible by utilizing our existing courier service to allow that to happen. So folks can reserve and go to a location that's closest to their home, and able to pick up those materials and return them there as well.
Well, thank you for that answer, Director Gang. This sounds amazing. I'm glad to support this tonight, and I just, I was curious. I thought that's what it was. I just want to confirm. Amazing program, amazing work. Thank you. I'll be voting in favor of this, and thank you for that answer.
Other comments by counsel? I want to go back to the maker of the motion, Mr. Seymour. I didn't catch the one versus the over. Are you okay with the amended motion, just to make sure we collected the correct name?
Absolutely, and I'm sure I made that since it's an IT reference for storage. So yes, I'd like to correct that to Overdrive Inc., not to exceed $200,000. Thank you, Counselor Scully.
Second of the motion, Mr. Demott, you okay with that as well?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so the motion will be standing as corrected in the motion, so we got that in. At this time, this is a roll call vote. Ms. Parker, if you would, please.
Counselor Smith?
Yes.
Counselor Bowles?
Yes.
Mayor Atchison?
Yes.
Counselor Demott?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem sites?
Yes.
Counselor Seymour?
Yes.
And Counselor Scully?
Yes.
All right, thank you, counsel. Item 10D passes on a seven oh vote. Oh, God. Counselor Smith, I think you're up for item 10E1, please.
Yes, thank you. I move based on the recommendation of the city manager to determine that the public interest will be best served by approving a negotiated contract with Ashoots Net Titleless Footjoy, a purchase golf merchandise for an amount not to exceed $175,000 in 2021.
Counselor Demott?
Second.
I have a motion and a second for item 10E1. Are there comments or questions from counsel? All right, seeing none. Ms. Parker, this is 10E1. If you would, please, as a roll call vote.
Counselor Bowles?
Yes.
Mayor Atchison?
Yes.
Counselor Demott?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem sites?
Yes.
Counselor Seymour?
Yes.
Counselor Scully?
Yes.
And Counselor Smith?
Yes.
Item 10E1 passes on a seven oh vote. Ms. Smith, or Counselor Smith, if you'll do the second half of that, item 10E2, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move to authorize options for two additional one-year renewals for purchasing golf merchandise from Ashoots Net. Did I hear you say it? Ashoots? Kushnet, thank you. Titleless Footjoy for an amount not to exceed $175,000 in 2022 and in 2023, subject to annual appropriation.
Counselor Demott?
Second.
I have a motion and a second for item 10E2. Are there other comments from counsel? Counselor Bowles?
Yeah, I have just a quick question. Our agenda mentions it's a sole source contract, but our motions do not, and normally they do. Is there a reason why they don't? No, I don't have a format question, an answer to that. I really don't. It is, it is the sole source, and it's a sole source because we have a particular set of product lines that sell well in the pro shop, and it might be a good idea just to mention to the public, we're making this expenditure on the expectation that we'll sell this, these products for more than we're paying for them this evening. It's for profit, but I can't answer that. I apologize. If there's anybody that has the answer to that, please join me.
Mr. Trip, I would just add that the proposed language in the motion does contain the required findings that the public interest would be best served by approving the contract. So when we approve a sole source contract, that is a requirement that we have counsel include that finding in any motion approving the contract.
Okay, well, thank you. I just know that we normally word that. We didn't in this one. I know in the packet, and I was going to mention that, I understand why it's a sole source. It makes perfect sense, and I appreciate that paragraph in our background packet that outlined why it's sole source. I really appreciate that background information helped me, and I'm going to support it. I just was curious why it says on our agenda sole source, and the motions they don't, and they normally do. So I just had that question. Thank you for that. I appreciate it, and I'm going to support it tonight.
Any other comments from counsel in regards to the motion? I know all the golfers at Walnut Creek will appreciate your support tonight, because they primarily service this particular product out of Walnut Creek, and you should expect it at some point in the future. We'll see one for Legacy Ridge, but we'll be a different vendor. If there are no other comments or questions, Ms. Parker, you have item 10E2, please.
Mayor Atchison?
Yes.
Counselor Demott?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem sites?
Yes.
Counselor Seymour?
Yes.
Counselor Scully?
Yes.
Counselor Smith?
Yes.
And Counselor Bowles?
Yes.
Counsel, we have passed the last item of business for tonight on a seven oh vote. We've had a second request for a short bio break. It is 9:14. Let's try to be back at no later than 9:20. That'd give you about six minutes. 9:20, we will reconvene. We are in recess until then. Nine twenty, we will reconvene. We are in recess until then. Would help if I don't leave myself. Ms. Parker, it's actually nine twenty. Are we ready to go with the recording?
Yes, sir.
Okay, moving on to our next item on the council agenda tonight is a whole discussion on the city's response to the COVID nineteen. Uh, I'm going to turn this over to staff in just a second, but I want to update the council and those who are listening. That we received our first five-star restaurant inspection and approval this morning. Uh, in Jefferson County side, and a reminder that Adams County this past Friday did apply for the five-star program. And we anticipate we'll hear something hopefully by Friday of this week, and we can start the application process there. I talked to the owner of the restaurant. He said the uh inspection was primarily a review of their paperwork and the person was in and out and within fifteen minutes. So we greatly appreciate uh the restaurant owner letting us know that that was, went smoothly. Uh, because he had had some issues over the weekend getting that application finished. But it was done. He was set up. Uh, once it was submitted, it took fifteen minutes to get a response back from the county. And then they showed up today. So right now it looks like it's going well, and. They spend a good bit of time filling out these applications, because I think the overall package is about twelve pages long. So it has a lot of detail, a lot of information. So we appreciate that, and we appreciate the county's group trying to get out and get these restaurants open as fast as we can. Of the four hundred-plus applications that were received by Jefferson County, I saw last week approximately two hundred of those are restaurants. Uh, most of those inspect are processes, applications should be finished up this week, and as fast as they can get through the inspections, I would expect within the next week to ten days, they'll have most of those done. Mr. Tripp, I'll turn the rest of the COVID update to you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, we have three items on the COVID update tonight. First of all, Max Kirschbaum will take us through an update on data. That relates to the spread of the virus and the activities in hospitals. Um, we'll also, we also have in the agenda, um, an update on, on regional responses. Uh, the mayor represents the city in a lot of those, and I invite him, if he's got anything else he wants to add. Uh, we won't have any regional report, um, but we have it on the agenda in case the mayor does. And finally. Um, I'll have staff come on and speak to um an exciting announcement that was made just before the meeting publicly, and uh. Mr. Eric Burke, uh Deputy Fire Chief, would like to fill you in on that and provide you some details. So Max, if you'd come on, and then uh I'll, I'll back off here and uh let everybody step up to their particular items.
Thank you, Mr. Tripp. This is Max Kirschbaum, Public Works and Utilities. And this evening, I'll be showing you just a couple of familiar slides and give you some information on case data. On the first slide, um. Death continues to move generally in uh, in a stable. Uh, pattern, although slightly up. Uh, as the arrows show for new cases per one hundred thousand at, at state level, as well as in both Adams and Jefferson Counties. If you compare, just looking at that first line to these numbers that are shown on the slide are from Friday. Today's numbers, those same numbers are five thirty-two for the state, so just a little bit lower. Six twenty for Adams County, a little bit lower, and four thirty-three for Jefferson County, a little bit lower. Uh, once again, the uh percent positivities are similar to where they've been for the last couple of weeks. And today's data, again, very similar reading across the line. It would be six point four percent for the state. Ten point nine percent for Adams County today, and six point five percent for Jefferson County today. So, again, pretty similar. Looking at the hospital data, and you'll see it on the slide in a moment. Uh, Friday's data showed nine hundred and fifteen hospitalizations. Then that continued to go down a little bit further on Saturday and Sunday, and today it's back to where it was on Friday. Uh, nine hundred and fourteen cases, so um starting to see that little bit of uh, of um leveling. I'm not sure that it's a, it's a trend worth noting yet, but uh that data could be leveling off at about that, at that spot. And um, that's all I have for this evening, unless you have any questions.
Chief Burke, I guess you're up next.
Eric, please join us.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, members of City Council. Uh, thank you for the opportunity to speak with you tonight regarding this COVID testing site. Uh, this result of a partnership with the Colorado Department of Public Health and Environment, Jefferson County, Jefferson County Public Health, and Mako Medical. Uh, for those that aren't aware, Mako Medical is the vendor that staffs the COVID testing site at the Waterworld location. Uh, this um partnership is due to city staff members working closely with these health partners to secure testing services for our community. In reviewing testing needs, it was determined that there continues to be a need for COVID testing in the community. Um, this is in part to address any closures of sites that occurred in twelve thirty-one of twenty. And to address a Westminster need for community testing, as well as a need in the northern Jefferson County area. Um, city staff reviewed multiple site options during these discussions. Uh, we collaborated to review ten, approximately ten sites in the city of Westminster. When looking at the site options, we used a baseline number of a site that could potentially host. Anywhere from five hundred vehicles today to a thousand vehicles a day, and that being the baseline. In talking with our partners, um, one of the goals was to establish a high-volume site, and obviously a thousand vehicles per day is along those numbers that our partners were looking for. Uh, so city staff reviewed these sites with our health partners and determined that the parking lot north of the fat cat's location. Was the ideal location to perform these testing services. Um, this was selected for multiple reasons. Um, which include, we're limited to the following. Number one, that it's city property. This allows testing services and queuing lanes to remain on city property. Has the ability to handle a large volume of visitors. Uh, there's a name recognition that the fat cats provides, uh, just as the Waterworld site does, that you know where it's at when you hear the name. It's proximity to US thirty-six, and an identified need working with Jeffco Public Health, um, for a testing site in the northern Jeffco area. In this partnership, all testing services will be performed by Mako Medical, and the services will be funded directly by the Colorado Department of Public Health and Environment. Uh, that funding supports all staffing, or Mako Medical staffing, specimen collection, the test, as well as laboratory fees. Um, to support this site, the city of Westminster entered into a use agreement, allowing Mako Medical to use our city property for these testing services. And in partnership with uh Jefferson County, we will also be supporting the logistical items needed to support the testing operations. Those items include. Items such as trailers, cones, generators, and traffic management. We estimate those costs on a monthly basis to be approximately twenty-seven thousand dollars to support those testing operations. Um, and again, in partnership with Jefferson County, we'll be funding those logistical needs. The CD P H E has committed funding to Mako Medical through March thirty-first, two thousand twenty, so through March, so we have committed to help support those testing operations through the same duration of time. Ultimately, this partnership will provide access to free COVID testing to the community seven days a week, ten hours a day, and testing will be available from eight AM to six PM each day. I'm, I'm very happy to answer any questions that you may have regarding the site and these agreements.
Eric, specifically, can you address the date that this might start?
I can. This has uh been, uh, Mayor, this has been a fast-moving agreement to get services in place. The Colorado Department of Public Health and Environment's notification went out earlier. Uh, before council this afternoon. Uh, they will start testing operations at eight AM tomorrow, January twelfth. Um, so this testing operation will start. Again, they anticipate the first day will take a little bit to get uh volume moving, uh, but they will be starting testing tomorrow.
All right, thank you, sir. Uh, on behalf of us, uh, here at council, we wanted to thank Jefferson County for all the work they did to help us with CD P H E. We've not had a testing site in Jefferson County north of the fairgrounds. And this has been an issue that we've been trying to work. I know, uh, Mr. Tripp and Don Davis from Jefferson County have been very instrumental in trying to pull this together and get the testing site. We know that there is still a huge demand, uh, even over at Waterworld, but not having anything on the north part of Jefferson County has been a continuing concern, and we appreciate all the work everyone has done from the staff. Uh, Jefferson County, the state, to get this up open, especially since they just approved it and hoping that basically the following day. Uh, that's monumental, even if we have a slowdown on people being able to get in there. I think over the next couple of days, we'll start to see that traffic build up. So Eric, thank you and the staff for everybody who did everything they can to get this thing running. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Counselor Demont.
Um, fir- first of all, thank you for all the work in putting that together and all the things that you guys have done since last March. I know it's been a, a long haul. I'm just curious, um, is there any? Just so that everybody understands the way that they do these testing facilities, with having people that are potentially sick in and out of what's kind of a, can be a busy area. Um, I'm, I'm assuming, just to share with the public, that a lot of precautions are taken to make sure. While sick people go in and out, you know, that there's not exposure to folks that are over in that area.
Yes, uh, thank you for that question, Counselor Demont. Um, you make a medical as a vendor that staffs, um, as we mentioned earlier, um, Waterworld site and other sites. Um, when we were exploring partnerships, we wanted to make sure that we had the right partner for our community, and make a medical, we received great feedback on. One, the services they provide and their um biohazard containment, um, their safety protocols, and all the safety measures they put in place for their staff, as well as the community. This will be a drive-through testing site, and we've designed it to keep on major roads so that people can drive through, um, complete their test, and quickly exit the site to head back home. So. Um, we don't see a risk based on these precautions for the community and the partner that we have and the work we've done, C P H E to review it.
Great. Thank you again for all your work on this and making sure that you guys are thorough in this, uh, going through these rough tasks.
Other comments on, or questions from counsel on this item? I'll go back to Max's comments a little bit earlier. Uh, what I will tell you, we have continued to watch. The infection numbers and our positivity numbers for the last two weeks, they're almost up and down. Uh, on it like a yo-yo for basically, we've seen some changes within one day, going up forty-four points, dropping fifty points later in the day, so. The issue of whether or not we have reached the peak of the Christmas, New Year's is still in question. I will tell you that the four hospitals that I meet with on a weekly basis are all saying that they have space in their ICU units. We have ICU units that have COVID infections of anywhere from three in one hospital to twenty in another, but they all have room at the present time in their ICU wards. This past Friday, uh, myself and three other commissioners from Adams County did uh tour the COVID wards up at St. Anthony's North, uh, got a chance to sit down with some of the. Actual on-the-floor nursing groups. Their biggest concern is people not taking this serious. They're also concerned about the amount of burnout. And the emotional strain that their staffing and their fellow nursing aides are doing up there and what it's doing to them. Uh, they made a conscious plea to please continue to impress upon the public the need for wearing masks, washing your hands, and safe distancing. We cannot afford to not have medical staff out manning these stations. We're very fortunate right now that we do have some capacity, but I hope we never use that capacity, uh, so we can continue, as Eric and them were talking about, with our professional groups. Um, also, we'll tell you that a, a number of vaccine locations are starting to pop up for those that are in the seventy-plus group. I've talked to several people today who've had contacts from their service providers, such as Centurial, S E L Health, and others. To start scheduling them, some has uh put in an application today and they're scheduled tomorrow. So there are places around. I know Thornton uh has one uh through S E L Health, I believe, Eric, you may can help me. At the fire department over there in Thornton, and then I heard of two sites up in Firestone that started today through other health providers. So we're starting to see a number of health providers that are receiving vaccines, uh, that can start to go to expand the one A group. And starting to catch that seventy uh plus group as well. Eric, have you heard of any others uh through your contacts?
Um, Mayor, as, as you mentioned, many of the hospital systems are expanding their vaccination opportunities. Um, we're starting to see some additional sites that are opening up in partnership. Um, with different entities, uh, Jefferson County in partnership with the Arvada Fire Department has a site open in Jefferson County. Um, the, I believe that North Suburban has opened up a site as well, but it, as you stated, uh, Thornton Fire Department. In their partnership with Tri-County Health, given that they were a COVID testing site, have been able to enter an agreement to serve as a vaccination site directly with Tri-County Health. Uh, but the hospital systems are expanding their testing partnerships, and we anticipate more to be available here in the coming weeks.
All right, thanks, Eric. Mr. Tripp, you have anything else on the COVID report?
I don't have anything else, just to, except to say, to express my admiration for what folks like Eric Burke and all the people he worked with do. And these are, these are challenging things to put together, believe me, with all the entities involved. Uh, and they pulled it off, and I, I think we should all really appreciate it. I know you do, and, and I do as well. Thank you, Eric, and all, and everyone who, who worked with you.
And I think. Counsel, let's move on to item twelve. I know a number of you expressed a desire to possibly formulate a letter on behalf of the city. In regards to the events from last week, I asked the counselor, I'm sorry, I asked Mr. Tripp to have Ryan Hagerness, our communications department, to come back on the uh. Phone with us. He's indicated he's there. Ryan, I don't know if you were hearing uh all of the comments made by council, uh, as to some of the things they'd like to address. And what I'd like to ask is, would it be possible for you over the next day or two to draft a letter? On behalf of council, send it to the council for review and concurrence, and then we can deal with this, uh, because of the timing. Since we don't meet next week, we can try to deal with this through the uh. Response through the email. And uh, that way we can get the comments, or any comments coming back from council, or any questions, or, or how they want to word this thing, and give them a day or so to look at this.
Absolutely, Mayor.
Ryan, Ryan will probably have more to add, but I, I need to say that I think we need a little more direction. We, we've gotten some comment. From you individually about this issue, but I do think it would be worth time. Uh, to move expeditiously here, to have some comments from uh any of you that want to make them, as to what you'd like to see the content say, and even, even if you could express in a sentence. Uh, Ryan will take notes. That's the one thing. And then the second thing is, when do you want this back to you? I mean, I'm, I'm hopeful that with enough feedback. We could potentially get something in your hands to look at tomorrow. And then third, Mayor, how, how do we come to conclusion as to? Um, you know, a letter that's being written by seven people. I, I would ask for a little grace, maybe to um, to write it, and if we go through. Too much back and forth editing, uh, it'll still be sitting someplace um, a few days from now. So those are my comments. Uh, Ryan, is there anything else that would be helpful for you to know specifically uh to, to, to take care of this task?
Thank you, Mr. Tripp. Um, I think what you've covered would, would certainly be helpful. I've, I've listened to uh comments made by council thus far, but I think any additional. Perspectives to help guide that letter would be helpful, and then just some expectations on of, on timing, so that we can make sure that we hit the mark for you.
All right, well, I'm going to go to the council members who've indicated they'd like to make a comment. So I'm going to start with Counselor Demont.
Thank you, sir. Um, thank you, Ryan and Don, for this opportunity as well to work with you guys on this and the rest of the council. I, I want to read um something from an, an officer that I follow that is in Texas, that is a kind of a public icon, but is an officer, does some fitness stuff, and.
And, and he had recently posted, "Why Couldn't We All Call Out the Bad Cops While Supporting the Vast Majority of the Good Ones? The looks on my brothers' and sisters' faces every day is one of the most disheartening things I've seen. To watch someone you dreamed of doing become your biggest fear is soul-shattering." I think that is inclusive of the temperature of a lot of different things throughout this year, or the last twelve months of, you know, through an election and a pandemic. I think one of the most horrific things that somebody can go through is being cast as something that they're not because they believed in something or they supported someone. I know that everything that I heard earlier tonight is all coming from a good place. I think this whole council has multiple times said that it absolutely would not stand by racism. It absolutely would not tolerate white supremacy. Those things are disgusting to us all. And, you know, none of us would stand for it. However, one thing I want to avoid is typecasting everybody who was in DC last week in that same realm. There were a large amount of people who went there to peacefully protest, who did feel that the election, for whatever reason, you know, they wanted it investigated. And I think that's part of our process, and that's good, whether you agree with them or not. But I think we all are against anybody who took from that point of peaceful protest and then went to violent crime, just like we would any other time for any other protest. The reason I bring this up is I want to make sure that, as somebody who's been accused of being a racist, and I am not, that is the most reprehensible thing that you could accuse somebody of. And I want to make sure that, you know, if we as a council are trying to, A, call out bad actors in a horrific thing that we saw in our Capitol last year, which I don't think any of us disagree with our last week, I don't think any of us would stand by that, and we all think that it was disgusting. But I don't, I want to make sure that we're doing something that unifies the community. I think this whole year needs to, you know, we need to step back as leaders to the community. How do we work together? We have very different mindsets. Some of us may, myself, I did support President Trump. I know many of you did not. You, you supported President Biden. We need to move forward, folks, and to do that properly, we do that together. And we want to make sure that this calls out the ugliness that we saw. It calls out, you know, whatever ugliness that we need to call out for the last twelve months. But realize, we have a very divided nation, and if we're going to take a step in being a local, small part of that to move forward, we need to make sure we're all on board. And so I bring those things up because I want to make sure that we have something that we all are happy with. And we all are like, yep, that, that hits the mark, you know, this council's moving forward, unified on this. I would even be open to saying, let's, you know, pick, I, I know we all know that there's a certain line of people who have different national politics, and I think that we could get two people to work with Ryan and his team in the interest of time and move this forward. I don't know if you guys are open to that idea, but I want to just make sure that I'm being transparent and open in my concerns with this and my desire to be on board with a good unified statement.
Counselor Seymour.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thanks, thank you, Counselor Demont, and Counselor Scully for, for bringing this topic up too. Yeah, I, I was sickened last week by what happened at the Capitol. I was sad by the loss of life, tragic. And, and I think we need to make that point. I think we need to call out the bad actors, and I think we need to do as much possible than to unify ourselves and our residents. And so that's why I sent that email out today, is I really want a win-win on this. I really want us to, to come together and, and let our residents know that, that we're here and that wrong is wrong. And, and that we can all now move forward with that. So that was my comment, and I, I would have no objection to a couple of people working together because that might alleviate a little stress on the staff too, and I can appreciate the position they're in on this too. Thank you.
Counselor Scully. Counselor Scully, you're muted.
So thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, Counselor Seymour and Counselor Demont. I appreciate your sentiments and your words, and I appreciate your support. I want this to be a unifying document, but I, I do want to make sure that residents know that we recognize that the actions that were taken at the Capitol do not reflect what our country is about and that we stand tall and united and that we follow our Constitution, we follow our nation, and we follow our laws. And that it's important that we accept and welcome our new administration, whether that's the administration that you voted for or not, it is the administration we have now. So we need to join together to support our new administration and that we are supportive of our electeds who have been put in a very bad position and have, at this point, have to defend their actions and their lives. And that we expect our community to come together to stand strong. And most importantly, I want to make sure that we condemn racism, bigotry, prejudice, and white supremacy in our city. We, we have, we continue to have this issue in our city, and I think it's important that we make it clear that this is not acceptable as a, as a city council. So those would be my sentiments, obviously very emotional. And I would also support having a couple of people from our council join with Ryan to compose this letter. I think that would be a fabulous idea.
Counselor Wols.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll be brief. I agree with everything that's been said already. Thank you, counselors, that's wise, and I like everything that's been said so far. I would also add, though, I want to, I want us to also maybe consider looking to the future, meaning hope for the future, hope for a time when we can be together, where we can gather together as friends and residents, where we can gather and celebrate the great things that our city and what we're about. I, you know, I know we can't do that now because of COVID, but I think putting that hope and that hope for the future and looking forward is important too. So I don't know if anyone agrees with me, but I think I would like to see that in there as well. So just that kind of last little positive part. Okay, thank you.
Mayor Protam.
Thank you so much for this conversation. I think it's been really helpful. I would agree that I do want to have a statement that everyone can get behind. I would never ask any of you to put your name on something that you were uncomfortable with. I would hope that, and I believe that all of us will get behind denouncing the violence and the use of, you know, destruct, destruction to try to disenfranchise the voters. I mean, I think all of us agree that that, that violence is not the appropriate mechanism. I would hope that we could speak out against the symbols of white supremacy that were there. I recognize everyone who went to protest. Some people went to protest and walked down Pennsylvania, you know, they were there to protest. That's within their right. It's when you cross that line that I think we should call it out. And I do think chanting, that for the, for the hanging of our Vice President is problematic. Looking to hurt members of our Congress or kill them is problematic, and I hope we as a council could support denouncing that behavior. I've already read my statement. You guys know where I stand on this issue. I don't expect you all to stand in line with me, but I would like this to be as meaningful as possible. I do want to wave, I, I do believe the only silver lining that I've witnessed from this has been a bit of a rebound from, from the fringes and people coming together to denounce this. I would hope we could exhibit that on this council, that this could help us take down the temperature and remind each other and our community, this isn't a zero-sum game. It's not us against them. We are all Americans first and foremost, and we respect each other's rights and liberties, freedoms, and our responsibilities to each other. So that's, that's where I'm at it, but I, I would be upset if we couldn't include some level of denunciation for the, the, the white supremacy images that we saw and for the use of force and violence to try to, to disenfranchise the voters.
Counselor Smith.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I can't add much more than what my colleagues have said, and I think that, and I read my, my thoughts on the matter, but I, I think this lends to a great perspective of where we all are at as a council. It sounds like we're fairly unified in itself on this as far as like freedom of speech, denouncing violence, and respectfully using your voice in a peaceful constitutional manner. And I think that it's important that we recognize that. But also, much to Counselor Wols's point, looking at the bigger picture as far as down the road, how can we as a community, how we as a community can look to building a stronger, better future, not just for us, not just for our, our children, but there and beyond. And so I, I agree that I would like to be a part of a unified voice, and I don't oppose having one or two counselors participate in the creation of this letter. I also think that, again, just, it's, it's heartwarming and humbling just to see what we've just done here as far as talking openly and candidly about what we feel, not just about this event, but just in general. And I can't agree more with my colleagues as far as showing firsthand to our community what we as electeds, what we as a council can do as far as discussing such troubling and hard matters. So I commend you all for just speaking from the heart and where you're at on this. And I look forward to moving forward with the letter that, that we can all send our names to.
Counselor Demont.
Thank you, sir, and thank you, everybody, for the rich discussion. I think it's, it's great. And one other thing that I would ask is, as you call out white supremacy and you call out racism, that we do it in such a way that we're, again, we're not typecasting. In like, I think of a particular instance where, you know, I've been typecast because I had a hat that had a three percent symbol on it. I've done a lot more research about that group since I had that hat, and you don't see me wear that hat anymore because so many people have decided that that's something that that original group, from at least from what I read, didn't want it to be. What I knew about that group was they were all about the Constitution. They're a group of people supposedly who would lay down their life for the Constitution. And I think of Mayor Protam's sites words earlier about, you know, that oath that we take to the Constitution. I take that very seriously, as I know the rest of you do. To me, I consider myself a constitutionalist above anything else. And I just bring that up because it's so easy for symbolism to be hijacked by people full of hate. And it's a good, you know, reminder to be careful about which ones you, you know, I guess latch on to. But also, you know, just however, Ryan, you and your team can make sure that we're calling those things out in a way that we're saying, you know, these are things that we know are a problem, and there's groups, you know, filled with hate that try to, you know, get on a national narrative, because we see it on, on all sides where, where folks see, you know, a fire and there's people full of hate, and they just go towards that fire. And a lot of people sometimes get caught up in that unfairly. So, you know, I just would reiterate that, and thank you all for this conversation. I think it's great. I look forward to whatever statement you guys come up with that we all can get behind and, you know, as a city just show, you know, that we're trying to be unified going into twenty-one.
All right, counsel, I'm going to ask you to think about this. This is, in my opinion, this is a time-sensitive item that needs to be responded to sooner than later. And we don't meet for two weeks. What I'm going to ask is to give Ryan and his team to make sure that they have a clear understanding of what they think they've heard. Ryan, if you have questions of individual counsel, if you don't want to ask them here on the air, please contact them directly to make sure you have a clear understanding of what they've said. But to get a draft out as quickly as reasonably possible, to try to address the comments made by the council, we have a process by which we can send you back comments, and then to get a final draft out. But I would like to see this out a lot sooner than the next time we are, are meeting, which wouldn't be till the twenty-fifth. That's just a long period to let this sit and hang. So whatever you and Mr. Tripp and any of the other groups that want to provide help, put this together, get the direct comments back from the council if you want. But we have to agree as a group what that final version goes out.
Mr. Mayor, if we're still talking about this on the twenty-fifth, we will have failed you.
Yeah.
I'm, I'm thinking, I'm thinking that we want to have something in your hands tomorrow. I've, I've talked with Ryan about that ahead of time. I'm going to do, I'm going to at some risk here. I'm going to, I'm going to take a chance at, each of you said three, four, five, six things. Here's what I thought I heard from each of you that was the most important thing that you said. Now, I'll just go in the order you spoke. For Counselor Demont, he was very adamant about not typecasting everyone who was in DC, who was at that event, as being somebody who went there to be violent and to be careful not to associate symbols with what is in people's, what's in someone's heart and what their intent is. I thought that was something that he said a couple of times. For Counselor Seymour, he, he mentioned sickened by what happened last week and sad for the loss of life. For Counselor Scully, actions taken at the Capitol don't represent our country and that we welcome and accept our new administration. A number of you said condemning racism, bigotry, and white supremacy. So to me, that's, that's a sentence that's in there. John Volz, "Hope for the future that we can gather and, and share and celebrate success." That's, that's a different sort of a, a direction in the letter, but it's something that, that could be pointed out in the way of, just as, just as you've said it, that, that we're, that you're thinking about the future and looking forward to the day that we have this dissension behind us and that we can get together and talk and disagree socially without being disagreeable. For, for Mayor, Mayor Protam's sites, I think the one thing that's different, you also mentioned white supremacy, that we are all Americans first and foremost. For Counselor Smith, one thing I heard you mention twice, you said it during your council comments, and you mentioned again, I thought, I thought it was prophetic. I thought it was really good. Freedom of speech, respectfully using your voice. And the fact that, and then you said at the end that this was crafted, you could say this right in there, that we crafted this by talking openly and candidly with each other. That's how we created this letter. So if I didn't hit it, if I missed something for any of you that is important to you, please point that out. But these are the things that I heard. I didn't read out things, everything, obviously, but I think I, with what I wrote down there, I captured maybe a bit of everybody's things. And I would also say that if there's something that's really important to you, send Ryan an email. Send him, send him a short, a short phrase or sentence so that he's got that when he sits down. Because I, if I were him, and I'm not, I don't know how you're going to do this, Ryan, you're a soldier, man. I really appreciate it, and, and he'll do it, and he's done this before. I, I think to craft something with everybody's sense of it, he's got to have a few, a few words and, and sentences, and a few words and phrases, maybe. And so if he has one from each of you and then tries to put, put that together in a paragraph, a couple paragraphs as a letter, I mean, you know, you'll feel hopefully that you can sign it. That's what I'm getting at. And, and Mayor, I didn't hear anything specific from you. Please do send to us if there's something that you want, have, you want to have said here. Thank you for hearing me out.
All right, I've got two comments still here, Counselor. All right, I've got two comments still here. Counselor Demont?
Well, actually, after that, I just want to thank City Manager Tripp for his thorough note-taking. I think from what I heard, you, you hit it right on the head, Don, and I really appreciate the fact that you obviously were very much listening to what, what each of us were saying in a way that I think you really felt what, what we were saying.
Counselor Smith?
Thank you. I just want to echo, reiterate, add those adjectives in there, verbs in there as far as thanking Mr. Tripp for going through, each not only just capturing what we just talked about, but going through what each of us have discussed. So thank you for that. All I ask as far as timing is that it be finalized and/or approved in a timely fashion that I could either be notified via lunchtime and/or after work, three or four o'clock in order to review and provide feedback, so much that it doesn't go out before then. So that's all I ask. So thank you.
Mayor Proto?
And I just was hoping in, in the very good job that City Manager Tripp took taking notes for each of us, I hope you will, Ryan, you will go back to my statement, or I can even email it to you in addition to the comments I added in this conversation.
Please do add that, that context and, and content for us. But really highlight what is the single most important thing. You all made, you know, a lot of comments early on this evening too, and we really, really want to hit. It doesn't have to be one thing. The, the letter will be long enough to have, you know, two or three things probably from each of you. Thank you.
Mr. Hagerness, you have a monumental challenge to try to get all this into less than a ten-page letter.
You all have made that challenge much easier with the dialogue that just took place and also with Mr. Tripp's thorough summary. So I, I'm confident that we can get something to you tomorrow that will at least get us eighty percent of the way there, and we certainly welcome your final inputs and improvements on that so that it best reflects your, your intents and your message to the community.
All right, counsel, you should be anticipating that sometime tomorrow you're going to get something. So as your opportunity during the day or toward the latter part of the day, check your emails. If you have questions or comments, get those back to Mr. Ryan if that's your first opportunity. And then we will try with over the next day or two to get a final version that's ready to go out. And again, my point is, this needs to be done sooner than later, and we don't have two weeks to wait on it. All right, Mr. Tripp, is there anything else that you have on your agenda for tonight? Otherwise, I'm going to get us into the executive session.
Oh, sir, just the exec session now. Thank you.
All right. Mr. Frankel? Next time I was up with you, if you would, please lead us into this item.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The executive session that is proposed is to review and discuss city facility security measures pursuant to Westminster Municipal Code 1113C6 and Colorado Revised Statute 2464024D.
Counsel, as you've heard from the city, city attorney's office, there's been a request to going to an executive session. I will ask each of you if you're prepared to do that, and then we will reconvene at the new location after a few minutes, but we're not going to take a long time. It'll just be taking a couple of minutes to get into the new item. Remember, you have the link and your passwords already in your emails. This time, I'll ask each member of council to confirm that they are prepared to go into executive session. Counselor Scully?
Yes, sir.
Counselor Demont?
Yes, sir.
Counselor Wols?
Yes.
Mayor Protem?
Yes.
Counselor Smith?
Yes.
Counselor Seymour?
Yes, sir.
And the mayor, we are adjourned at this meeting at ten oh four. We'll see you all as soon as you can get over to the other site.